I am calling this meeting of the York County Council to order. I will give the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Everyone, wherever you are, please put bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking for guidance and wisdom. We pray for those who are sick from COVID-19 and ask for your mercy and grace upon them. We pray for the doctors, nurses, and first responders who are on the front lines of this crisis. We pray that you give wisdom to those who are researching this virus and will find it here. I ask that you be with our community and state. Bless those who are out of work and need our help more than ever. Be with the business owners who are doing everything they can to keep the doors open. I pray that our state reopens as quickly as it can when it is safe to do so. Lastly, I pray for your guidance tonight. I pray that this council makes the right decisions and does what is best for our county. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
If everyone would join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Perhaps a bit disjointed, but we are underway. Anyone who is having problems, and if you're having problems, I'm not sure how you might hear me, but there is a phone number for you to, you can call. It is 803-684-8570. Again, I'm going to say it again. Area code 803-684-8570. If you're having a problem with Zoom, you can certainly listen in that way. There are no oaths of office or appearances, and there's obviously no public forum. Is there any matter on consent agenda that any member of council wishes to remove? Is there a motion as to consent?
So moved.
Second.
There is a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Love, how do you vote?
Oh, what am I voting on?
The consent agenda.
Oh, you have to ask us one at a time?
I do have to ask us one at a time.
I vote four.
Mr. Winkler.
I'll vote four.
Mr. Roddy. Mr. Roddy abstains. Ms. Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Blackwell.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
I vote yes. We are through the consent agenda. Public hearing. Council to hold a public hearing and consider amending the third reading of an ordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, ET Real Estate Holdings LLC, its affiliates, related entities, successors and assigns, as well as the addition of sponsor affiliates meeting the requirements of Title 12, Chapter 44 of the Code of Walls in South Carolina 1976 as amended to the fee in lieu of tax agreement. All with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of ad verum taxes, including provision of certain special source and/or infrastructure improvement credits and/or bonds, providing for the inclusion of the companies and sponsor affiliates designated property in a multi-county industrial and business park and the allocation of fees in lieu of ad verum taxes payable under a multi-county industrial and business park, all as an incentive to the company to locate its project within York County, South Carolina, and other economic development incentives and other matters related there, too. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against?
Mr. Chairman, we have our first person, the phone number, the last three digits, one, two, two. Please state your name and address for the record.
Charles Harbin, York, South Carolina.
Mr. Harbin, please let us know your opinion.
I think the project in total is rather scary since this is a 30-year project. There's very little information that's been given to the public, or at least I have seen, and most of that information has come from either the Herald or the Charlotte Observer. I'm concerned what the long-term impact is going to be on the county, as well as my town. We don't know what the impact is going to be. We've seen very little details, or at least I've seen very little details. I'm just deeply concerned about what the impact is going to be. I understand that Rock Hill wants this particular project greatly because it's going to be within the city limits of Rock Hill, but what about the rest of the county? The 30-year long-term deal scares me mainly because even the IRS on buildings gives you a depreciation of 25 years, or at least it used to. There's, there's going to be a huge impact on property owners. There's going to be an impact on people who work, say, in Charlotte and other areas outside the city of Rock Hill. It's, this whole thing scares me with no more information than we have. And further, something this big ought to be put to the voters, not the county council meeting. That would allow all of us to digest what information is put into this project. If I was Mr. Temper, I would be grinning from ear to ear that this is being pushed through this quick with very little information out there to the public. I understand there've been public hearings, but to get to these public hearings can create a problem for a lot of people. I'm one of them. Plus the fact we've got this coronavirus restriction about attending meetings. Anyway, I am at a point where this whole project scares the life out of me, and people do not, I think, understand what the total impact is going to be on them as an, as a property owner, as a voter, as a resident. The impact is going to be great, and I just think that we ought to be able to vote on this, or the county council at least give a lot more information in a lot more meetings in various areas and not just in the city of Rock Hill. That's, I hope I'm not breaking any protocol or any council rules at this point, the way I presented this, but this whole thing scares me. And I just, until I saw this Sunday, I was going to make inquiries, try to see copies of whatever the information is available regarding this project, but this is a big, huge project that's got a lot of information that's not available to the public, and especially people in Rock Hill, because Rock Hill is going, according to what I've read, Rock Hill is going to pay the greatest amount of cost in this project, but also it's going to be shared with the county. And 30 years is a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trish, is there anyone else who would like to speak against?
Yes, sir. We have Trent Irving, and then next would be phone number 477. Mr. Irving, please state your name and your address for the record.
Trent Irving, Rock Hill. I'm going to piggyback on what the previous speaker said. I have some concerns about the projected return on the project. I've yet to see any sort of spreadsheet projections as to how we're going to get the return on $255 million in tax incentives given to someone while we're simultaneously asking taxpayers to pay $259 billion more dollars towards school stuff and other projects. So I'm kind of just at the point where I'm wondering why we keep giving these incentives to billionaires and expecting working-class citizens that make on average under $15,000 a year to foot the expense for these projects when we don't have a lot of information. Like you said, we don't know how it's going to impact, and we don't know what we're going to get in return. I'm all for economic development in an area. Don't get me wrong, growth is a great thing, but at the same time, you have to be able to show how it's going to balance out. You can't necessarily ask for the largest tax increase in city history while you're simultaneously giving a billionaire one of the largest tax rates they've ever been given in the state history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irving. Trish, who is next?
Okay, next we have phone number, the last three digits, 477, and then after that will be Mr. Paul Anderco. Last three digits, 477, with the phone number, please go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is John Kingsbury, and my address is 2649 Sturgis Road. I, I was very disturbed to hear that there were several private properties added to this, this deal late in the game, and just curious as to why they were added, why the people that, the property owners weren't informed that their properties were added to this deal, what the necessity to add them to the deal was. I frankly think that this type of meeting is a horrible way for anyone to be able to voice their opinions because there are, this is not a public, actually, public hearing. This is a virtual hearing where many people are left out. My wife's 93-year-old grandmother owns a large property, and it's right in the middle of the properties that were added to the, to this deal. You know, what, what does that mean for her? And we've heard all kinds of different things and aren't even sure. The, the thing is, she's 93 years old. She has no idea what Zoom is. How can she possibly be involved in this? This is really kind of a travesty as far as public hearings go. So if you can answer some of my questions, I, I still have other questions possibly afterwards. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to ask further questions.
Mr. Kingsbury, unfortunately, the rules of a public hearing do not allow the council to respond. We are, we are simply here to hear you.
So what use has it been? Right. No use. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kingsbury.
Okay, next, Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Paul Anderco, and then after him will be phone number with the last three digits, 509. Mr. Anderco, please go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Trish, please make, I, is it, I'm not hearing Mr. Anderco. I don't believe anybody is based on the faces I see from council.
Um, that, would it be called?
To reconnect.
Yes, that's, there, tell me that's a technical issue with his webcam. So if Mr. Anderco, if you could call in on the phone, we could hear you better than we can through the webcam.
Trish.
Yes, ma'am.
If you could ask her to please just say verbally the telephone number, call-in and code again. There are still folks that are having trouble, and the help desk is not, is going to voicemail. So if we could just get the call-in number.
So the, the phone number again to call is 803-684-8570.
Okay, would you like to move on, Mr. Chairman?
Let's move to the 509, and we'll come back to Mr. Anderco.
Okay. Last digits, 509, please state your name and address for the record, and the next will be phone number, 412.
Hi, this is Elizabeth Sefton, and I live at 741 University Drive. From Hills. Um, I guess I was calling in because I have some concerns about the amendments as well as the overall project. I guess I was, at first, very excited about this economic potential, and after doing further research, mostly over the weekend, and due to the amendment, I have some questions. And I guess looking at this overall, every study that I've come across shows that new stadiums don't have the return on investment that are promised to the taxpayers, and that's one of the things I struggled with. And then I started looking into different facilities that are mixed-use, including the Star at Frisco, which is the Dallas Cowboys training stadium, stadium and mixed-use facility. And it actually had a huge economic boom for that area, but Frisco was preparing for that. They had a, not only 72 million from private investments, which was from the Dallas Cowboys, they also had, they'd been collecting money for development and sales taxes years prior to that, because they knew this is one that, what they wanted to do with the city. So they had 72 million in private investments, 24 million in pre-collected money, and then on top of that, they gave them $115 million, which gave them over a billion in return so far. If you look at our method, I guess we're promising more money for similar acreage, and we're not getting any return. And I, I'm not understanding how this is being justified, if anybody actually went through and read studies on this. Also, I'm not able to find a lot of information on how these facts and figures were determined. So I'm more interested in where to get that information and how these decisions are being found. My other concern is that we're having a very important council meeting during the coronavirus pandemic, which not everybody can, you know, connect into because it's a little bit, little bit technology there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to make another announcement. Anyone who is interested in calling, who would like to call a toll-free number, may Again, that is 877-853-5257. Trish, who is, who is next against?
Next, with Mr. Chairman, we have the phone number with the last three digits, 412, and then after that is the phone number with the last two, three digits, 096. Last three digits, 412, please go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Kimberly Roach is my name.
Go ahead, Ms. Roach.
Yes, I, I live at 4495 Highway 5 in Rock Hill, South Carolina. I'm just, my question is, I'm just wondering why the property owners were not informed of this issue if it concerned their properties. You have a lot of family farms in this area. People have owned these farms for years, passed down from grandparent to grandparent. And I know as a college student, a college graduate, I'm sorry, I have come back to work in this area just to live at my family farm, and then I understand this may be taking some of my friends' family farms. You know, that, that's a big issue when you have people coming back to live here, to live on their family property, and you're taking the property for this stadium, and these property owners do not know about this.
Anything else, Ms. Roach?
That's all, but I just want to say I think this is very sneaky and underhanded.
Thanks for your comments, ma'am. Trish, is there anyone against?
Yes, sir. Next, we have phone number, last three digits, 096, and then after that, Mr. Oxendine, you will be next. Phone number with 096 as the last three digits, please go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, this is, this is Billy Hackner. 1901 Voyager Road.
I was just on the air.
Hello?
We can hear you, we can hear you, Mr. Hackner.
Okay. Uh, 1901 Voyager Road, York, South Carolina. I am going to have to say this is a little bit more difficult getting to say some comments than what I was anticipating. I didn't have much look through the Zoom on my computer, and I haven't had any look getting anybody at the help desk either. But that being said, I'm just going to make a few comments. I'm talking in favor of. Is it time to talk in favor or against?
It is, Mr. Hackner is actually against, but you can talk in favor right now. We're, we're taking, we'll take them in any order, just the way this is going, so.
Okay, I, I would recommend that. All right, I'm just going to start off by saying that I do support this project. I think it's a great opportunity for the county and really the entire area. This project and, and problem, and a lot of the probable associated businesses, investments to the county, it'll have between $1 billion and $2.5 billion of investment. Much of this investment is going to be spent in the county and just adding to the local economy. In my opinion, it has very little risk to the county, and the county will actually receive a lot of tax income from this eventually. Starting in 2025, they're going to get $700,000. And annually, it's going to be increasing up to 1.6 million by 2030, and by 2035, it's going to be up to $7 million a year. Presently, this property really doesn't generate any tax revenue, very little now. And I think what I've been hearing, probably the best alternative, if, if this project avalanche doesn't go through, another alternative would, could possibly be a warehouse-type operation. And in my opinion, all this really does is kind of increase truck traffic, produces less tax revenue, and it's not going to add to the community any like this project avalanche. Also, warehouse, as y'all know, is really uses a lot of building square footage per employee. I think they use something like 6,600 square feet of, square footage per employee, which has businesses and commercial-type stuff, it's more like 600 square feet per square footage. So that's, that's an advantage to definitely not having warehousing, in my opinion. I think the main issue that most people have is this additional property, which is shown in Appendix G, which is being included in the FLO. I think it's around 1,150 acres and includes about 158 parcels. Of this 150 acres and 158 parcels, now this, my accuracy, I'm not going to guarantee my accuracy on some of this, most of it, on this, but I think I'm pretty close. There are five entities that make up 650 acres of this 1,150 acres, just five entities, and which is the city of Rock Hill, they have 251 acres, Rock Hill Economic Development 18, the Waterford Golf Course, 205, Church of Latter-day Saints, 100 acres, and the Waterford Charlotte has 71 acres. So they, those five entities have over, over 50% of this additional property we're talking about. 11 entities are basically investment leasing and holding, and that makes up about 100 acres. Looked like to me there were about eight businesses which had 40 acres. Then there's the individual, there were five individuals with large tracts of land, which makes up 244 acres. There's 24 individuals that just have small individual residential, and that makes up 91 acres. And then you have the subdivision, the Hutchinson Place subdivision, which has got around about 85 lots and 85 acres. So basically, you have 70, 114 people, 75% of the people, but they have 36% of the land that's in this additional 1,158 acres. But even though many of these, many of these properties may not even be affected, I think they just kind of said, here are some properties we may want, and that's what's included in it. A lot of these people may not be affected. But I do think that these people do have a very valid concern that's, that's included in this area, like what's, how's it going to affect, affect their taxes in the future? Are they going to be annexed? Is it such that will they have intimate domain, even though, and I don't think a private company can have intimate domain? But that being said, I don't think that, I really don't think that 114 individuals should determine the outcome of a project that affects a county of 260,000 people. My opinion is I think y'all do need to vote for this project and keep it going, but at the same time, I think you need to give some assurance to these people, these individuals, either tonight or an immediate future date to get their questions answered and calm down some, some of the concerns they, that they have. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Trish, who is next against?
Next, we have Mr. Dave Oxendine, and then next, Mr. Paul Anderco. Mr. Oxendine, will you please state your name and address for the record? Mr. Oxendine?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, sir. Will you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Dave Oxendine of 2515 Lee Lee Store Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina. I also represent Redline Chemical, which is located, I believe it was map number two, directly at the bottom of the Hutchinson, now the Panthers property, the property ends with 0021 as the parcel number. We've been operating this facility for about 18 years, and I have not had any conversations with Mr. Temper, his organization, and I hope that you as individuals have not had any either. So you can read between the lines on that statement. I'm not anti-business. I serve on a lot of boards in the community, and I look forward to support and advocate for business in general. I also look forward to the Panther development. Just like to call it before. I think it'd be a great idea and a great opportunity for the county. However, I have an issue with the manner this proposal has come to my knowledge, and that being the manner of Facebook. Heard what I said, Facebook. I learned at my property and some dear friends at my property in Sturgis Road were in the discussion for incentives, and I say again, I learned this on Facebook posts from Council Member Cox. And I just can't believe that, you know, we as a county would do such as far as that. So are we so wrapped up in this, with this billionaire that we forget about those constituents who own the land and the business in York County? In my quest for responses from you, I was further dismayed to learn, for those that replied, that you did not have any information on the 133 parcels of these 880 acres, yet discussions have been ongoing for supposedly 11 months. Some parcels are in excess of three miles from the Hutchinson property. Who provided the list? The Panthers, the city? And then they will be incentivized for 30 years, and we still don't know who the origin were? Can you begin to see how the, the citizens of York County are starting to wonder who is driving the train? Is this an occurrence where we have to follow the money later to see who benefits? Is this an occurrence where we have to follow the money later to see who benefits, to determine the origination? Has there been a precedent for previous developers to be incentivized on property that they were not in negotiations, in negotiations with or have submitted plans for? I've asked that question numerous times, but I have not received an answer. I think this is a first. However, what I have read in the document is the word annexation. Some say annexation is a benefit in the way property values. For our business at Redline, it will serve as a challenge as we'll have to pay the three-time cap fees, force coding requirements, or experience on utilities being cut off. As you know, some of the people have had that done, especially in uh, different areas of the industrial park. So what you're about to do is give a lucrative incentive for billionaires to buy a property. And we weren't even given notice except through a Facebook notification from Councilmember Cox. So why the rush? Why not have the plans outlined for these parcels? Maybe some gallant individual will step forward with that answer someday. But why in a time such as this without the appropriate dialogue between you and open communication with the public? COVID-nineteen is not the time to push this agenda. More time, more information. And I really appreciate the service that, that you guys do for the county. This is what that's what individuals have tried to get on. What about the ones that have not been able to solve or call in? Thank you for your time and appreciate your service to the community.
Thank you, sir. Who's next?
Okay, next sir, we have Mr. Paul. Mr. Paul Endrico and then right next, well, after him will be the telephone number with the last three digits, six, five, zero. Mr. Endrico, will you please say your name and address for the record? It looks like I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Have we lost Mr. Endrico?
No, um, he may have to unmute himself. Mr. Endrico, can you unmute yourself? Okay, he's, he's unmuted. I think we're still having some issues there. Would you like me to move on?
Let, let's go back. We'll come back to Paul when we can get his issues.
Okay, yes, sir. Alright, next we have the telephone number with the last three digits, six, five, zero, and then right after him will be the telephone number with the last three digits, zero, nine, zero. Last three digits, six, five, zero. Please state your name and address for the record.
Kevin Sanders, twenty-three fifty Sturgis Road.
Go ahead, Ms. Sanders.
Okay, I'm calling on behalf of myself and my grandmother and my dad. They're also located on Sturgis Road. Um, my grandmother, she's not very tech savvy, so this is all like coming up, you know, rather quickly and she's not capable of getting on Zoom or even getting in on this phone call, but we have been looking forward to the Panther project, um, until now, you know, we found out via Facebook, like the previous gentleman had said, that um, you know, our personal properties are gonna be affected and this is the property that my grandfather left to me, left to my dad, who also left to me. And like, this is um, very personal for us. So I just feel like as our nation is suffering from COVID-nineteen, it should be a better option um, for our community to come together and really hear um, the outcomes that are gonna be projected from this, the tax issues that are gonna come about, um, everything else. I just feel like now is not the time to bring this to the table. I just wish there was a better opportunity for the people to actually come out and hear what has to be said and then take a vote on it and on the different areas that are gonna be affected by the project. So I'm not for moving forward at this point because I don't know all of the details that I feel like need to be addressed.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Who's next, Trish?
Um, next is telephone number zero, nine, zero, and then after that, we'll try Mr. Endrico again. Telephone number with zero, nine, zero, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Mike Dorelia and I live in Catawba, South Carolina.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I had, over the weekend, had sent an email to council, all the members of council outlining several things that echoes some of the concerns of the other residents. I first wanna make it clear that I'm, I'm neither for nor against the project at this point and I'm in that position because I truly don't have enough information to make an informed decision. There was a lot of information that was posted on Friday evening with updates. Total of a hundred and, I think it was a hundred and thirty pages worth of information to go through. Um, there seems to be some information missing in my experience for a project of this scale of a return on investment. What the exact fee in lieu of taxes would be for that property for the thirty or forty-year period. Um, and some of the technology problems that we have seen in the short time that this meeting has been underway kinda underscore my concerns that there are members of the public that are not being able to participate in the process because this is taking place in a virtual environment like this. So my request to council is to postpone any decision on the project until a later date when a more traditional meeting can be held with people being able to appear before council in person and voice their concerns. And to also give the public some more time to gather information and for council to have an opportunity to provide more information so that we as a community can make an informed decision about moving forward with this project. And that was the extent of my comments. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, sir. Whenever you're ready, Trish.
Mr. Chairman, there are no other hands at this time. Oh wait, oh, just one second. We've got one more, one second, please. Okay, next sir, we have Michelle Patterson and after her is Dennis Merrill. Michelle Patterson, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michelle Patterson and I'm in Rock Hill. Um, I feel that the name Project Avalanche is an apt name because it feels like a ton of snow has dumped upon me and I can't breathe. Because according to this agreement and the plan with the Panthers that the uh, eight hundred additional acres that are included in this, one of those properties is mine and as Mr. Billy Hagner stated, oh, that's simply just a hundred and fourteen individuals. Well, when you're one of those individuals, it matters. We had no notification by the council that our parcel was included in this agreement. We have had no time for question and answers and how this will affect us, including things like possible annexation by the City of Rock Hill and how eminent domain could come into play. Uh, I sent emails to the council and to Christie Cox. Thank you for your Facebook post. That's the only reason I know about this. Uh, only because my neighbor told me. And I sent uh, emails to Michael Johnson, who did reply. Thank you. But uh, when I talked to Councilman Bumbradi today, he assured me that he would ask your legal department on how things like annexation and eminent domain could affect us and what the laws are in South Carolina and in Rock Hill. Um, I haven't heard that question asked yet and uh, I do hope that you would uh, get us answers before you would approve of this agreement. I feel like there are a backdoor politics that you always are practicing at this point, that this feels underhanded. And if it's not illegal to put our properties in there, it is very immoral, especially since we were not notified. I don't understand where the transparency is that is stated on the York County Council website. This doesn't feel very transparent to me. And what I ask is that Article Three, Section three point zero one C and Exhibit G be excluded from your agreement. And that you vote no until that is excluded and you relook at how this affects your constituents. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I wanna remind anyone, we have, we have checked, the helpline is open and operating and you can call eight oh three, six, eight, four, eight, five, seven, zero, if you need help to get on this call. Toll-free number is eight, seven, seven, eight, five, three, five, two, five, seven. Again, that's eight, seven, seven, eight, five, three, five, two, five, seven. Trish, who is our next caller?
Next, we have Dennis Merrill and then after that will be Scott McMillan. Mr. Merrill, please go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Dennis Merrill, ten, eleven White Horse Road, Rock Hill. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I, I thank you for the opportunity to speak to this issue that I only learned about earlier today. Which is interesting because many of the properties that are in question out here in Sturgis Road belong to my neighbors. And they're all wondering how this popped up out of the ground and suddenly became the part of a very positive economic development initiative that the county and the city and others have pulled together over a period of months and months. Now perhaps this mystery just dropped out of the sky, but I think not. Something's at work here, somebody's at work here and they're busy setting the stage for another invisible project to fall out of the sky. I urge you during these times to think long and hard about why this can't be postponed for a period of time. It's my understanding that the property for the stadium has already been purchased, which means that's on go. So what's the reason that there's a sudden rush in the dark to bring forward a project that adds some eight hundred acres of properties that's been invisible for all these months? I urge you to reconsider and to provide the time that many of the speakers have asked for. For information to be shared with the community. For this to be truly a transparent project. And I urge you to answer the question if you don't do that as to why you didn't, because it doesn't make any sense at all to me. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Trish, who is next?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, next we have Mr. McMillan and after that will be Mr. Bird, Mr. McMillian, McMillan, excuse me. Please go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Scott McMillan and I live in Hutchinson Place, uh, right, right next to the state where the proposed work is gonna take place. And um, I, I am also, I really appreciated the words of Michelle and Dennis, uh, that, that some transparency is really needed here. Um, you know, I have relatively been in favor of this and looking forward to it and I am probably the closest house to where the stadiums will be, aside from the old Hutchinson Place. And um, I feel like this, this kinda backdoor politics, which, which they mentioned, that this stuff gets thrown in and Christie, I do appreciate the Facebook posts. Um, because we, a lot of us would not be calling today if we didn't see that and that's just the fact. And um, you know, I agree that just more time is needed. Christie, you said you didn't even know that this was going in there. And I'm honestly shocked that we all have to call in and make our statements. This is my first time doing this. And none of you can reply. It's like, we just talk and then you guys make a vote later without giving us any information. So it's pretty disheartening in our government that, that we can get no answers uh, before you make a vote, so. I agree that more time is needed to understand this and who threw that in there and why and how it affects us. And so please serve your community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trish, any other against?
Yes, sir. Next, we have phone number with the last three digits, six, four, three, and then after that is Ms. Amy Hayes. If you have the phone number, six, four, three, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Scott Coconhour. One, two, two, West Oak Street, Fort Mill, South Carolina. Hey, appreciate your time and thank you for everything. I have uh, been keeping up with, I listened to Mr. Hamilton, who is our council member, uh, the other day. And on RHI did a wonderful job. Christie Cox, I appreciate all your uh, Facebook posts and Robert Winkler, I listened to you today on RHI. I agree with you one hundred percent. I am for doing the two hundred and fifty acres and throwing in the golf course. Um, I think that's the way to go tonight. Um, I do own commercial property, probably within two miles of this site in the Fort Mill School District. Uh, the Panthers will be paying ten cent on the dollar in property tax, what I pay right now. So um, now if the school bonds ever kick in, it'll be fifty cent on the dollar. But as of today, uh, the Panthers will be paying ten cent on the dollar and that'll put us at a competitive disadvantage uh, here in the Fort Mill School District. So um, I do um, I do support the, the original two hundred and fifty acres and throwing in the golf course. But the additional property that was thrown on at the end, I do not support. Thanks for your time and once again, thanks for everything you do.
Thank you, Scott.
Alright, next, Mr. Chairman, you have Ms. Amy Hayes and then after her is the telephone number with the last three digits, six, two, one. Ms. Hayes, will you state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Amy Hayes, address seven, seven, seven Milton in Rock Hill.
Go ahead, Ms. Hayes.
Um, my concern is, is mostly with how this is happening, um, given current events and where we are in the business cycle. Um, I think anybody who knows me knows that I am not afraid of paying a little property taxes to help the schools um, or issues like that, um, because I can see that that's a real benefit to me and my neighbors and our community. Um, but I'm a little concerned um, about how much we're paying for this when we don't know what we're getting back. Um, exactly. Um, we're getting more retail at a time when retail may collapse entirely. Um, and when we already have a lot of retail and we're trying to fill up the retail um, in downtown Rock Hill. Um, we're getting um, a lot of football-related activity um, at a time when we are already very reliant on sports um, in York County for, for development. Um, and we don't know uh, how many other pandemics and things like that are gonna be coming through, like, like, when are the crowds gonna be allowed to, to gather again? Like, we just don't know what the next two years, the next three years um, will bring. Um, and so I think that uh, the recent events um, might be a good reason to reconsider the whole deal and to look at it given where we are right now. Um, and so I think that maybe slowing this up a bit might be a good idea. Um, I do like economic development, like jobs. Um, I'm skeptical about whether or not um, people who live in Rock Hill will be getting those jobs. I know I can't tackle anyone. Um, and I don't, I don't work in retail. Um, so those are just my thoughts and I thought I'd share them with y'all. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Chairman. If you have the phone number with the last three digits, six, two, one, you're getting ready to speak and then Mr. Hold on one second, let me see if either. And then Mr. Larry Bird is back on and he will be next. So with the phone number, last three digits, six, two, one, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, this is Reagan Craig, eighteen oh four Craig Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina. And I think y'all probably already know my, my opinion of, of this job and this, this project and how it's going on. The uh, one of the disturbing things once again is, is that this is being rushed. There were changes made as late as Friday. There's all sorts of things on the website. This is the largest economic development This is the largest economic development deal that's ever happened in York County, maybe even the state of South Carolina. And has anybody done their homework? You get bits and pieces from straight talk, numbers that don't add up, uh, and, and you go to try to get the information and it's not there. So we're having a public hearing on a computer screen and, and you, and you probably wondering why people are getting upset. Well, if, just a little bit of homework, if you'll do it and look at it, one of the examples I was going to throw if I got to come in person was, once again, I went to the Brookings Institute and there's a large study done on stadiums and sports facilities in twenty fifteen and they generally don't pay. York County has a little bit of experience in that and the fact that Knight Stadiums, anybody remember that deal? Huh? Did we come out good on that? We did not. It was another sports deal, but no one has checked the research, no one has verified the research to make sure it's not a bunch of hooey. If you look at the, what came from York County Economic Development, and we all know this, what says in the contract, the Panthers only guaranteeing a hundred and fifty employees. Okay? But if you go to the economic development package, it says five thousand with average salaries of a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Now come on, folks, these numbers are all over the place. And if you go read the Brookings study, one of the things that happens every time is they start, these cities that put up stadiums have gotten inflated numbers of all these wonderful things that are going to happen and then they do not happen and there is no discernible link between economic development and sports facilities by many, many studies that have been done. So all this wonderful is going to be great, I don't think so. But my biggest problem with what's going on now is that I don't think meeting on Zoom constitutes a public hearing. Win or lose, whether you're for the Panthers or not, I believe in standing for the anthem. I don't kneel like some of the Panthers do. And so I'm not for the Panthers, I'm a cult fan, in case anybody wanted to know. But the fact is that, once again, this is not really right and there's no emergency, there's no urgency to this, there's no reason why, as this virus gets out of here, which I think it's going to leave us, that we shouldn't have a public hearing and tell all these landowners that get, getting affected that didn't even know it. And then I'll wrap up with one last point. Anybody that sits there and says that this won't be inside the city limits, every bit of it, in six months after this deal thrown down, don't know York County. Thank y'all for what you do. I know you're catching some grief tonight, but you know, it comes with the job, so hang in there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reagan. Trish, who's next?
Next, we have Mr. Larry Bird and at this moment, that is the last hand. Mr. Bird, will you go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, this is Larry Bird, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
I'm at three seventy-five Starlight Drive in Fort Mill. Like to say good evening to all the councillors, I think I know them fairly well. I hope they're doing just fine. I would like you to put yourself in the position of a taxpayer or a business owner in Rock Hill and put yourself in my position right here and trying to get this thing nullified or get more information. I sent you a letter about this thing, email, I've emailed all of you. My main concern is the constitutionality of this project, of how you're doing the public hearing. Do you care about the public? Are you going to listen to the public? Or are we going to be uh, smothered by a billionaire which is going to dominate Rock Hill? I love professional football. I'm getting a little bit older, though. I understand how the money's allocated for these, for these franchises. You could look at the Oakland Raiders, you could look at the Dallas Cowboys. But the thing is, why did you have this hearing during a time when people are shook up, scared, their livelihood is unknown, and you went ahead and had this thing? I just don't understand you, you're fine people. Why did you go ahead and have it? Why didn't you postpone it till a time we can have an in-person hearing, talk about it, go ahead, hash it out, get the details out and make up your mind and get, in fact, I'm not going to say too much more, I'd like you to have a referendum for the public to vote for this project. That's all I'm going to say, I hope you have a good evening. I'm not against it or for it. I'm a, I am for constitutional government, ethical government and transparent government, and I don't see it right now. I, I would challenge you for transparent government in the future, to have ethical decisions based on data and facts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Trish, does anyone else want to speak against?
Yes, sir, we have Mr. Bobby Polk and right now he's the last hand that's raised at this point. Mr. Polk, if you will go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Bobby Polk, I'm at fourteen twenty-five Alton Road in Rock Hill, South Carolina. As far as the, the deal going forward, I totally agree with the two hundred and fifty acres. I do agree with what the folks are saying about being uh, transparent to the folks that own the property in the eight hundred or so acres that is uh, in question. I think that's a huge question for everybody. But I do agree with uh, some remarks, like a gentleman said earlier about the two hundred and fifty acres are there about what it is and the golf course, I think that would be good. I do believe there is more time needed to be able to come up to a good decision, a good solid decision that allows especially for the folks in the eight hundred acre area to have some input and be able to hear more about what's going on. I'm not a real big football fan, so I'm not uh, pulling or for or against this, but I do believe in economic development and whether we, you know, sign it or not tonight, I don't know what's going to happen. I just think we need to have a commitment from the team um, for the whole timeframe that these um, incentives that they're going to get, that they, I guess what I'm trying to say is pass that point. We need to make sure that we look out for ourselves on the back end of this as much as we do on the front end, because if they decided to leave and go to another town, we would end up with a whole lot of structures, just like uh, the baseball stadium did with Knight Stadium and then we got to deal with that. So we need to look at the back end of this as much as we need to look at the front end. I mean, we need a real long-term commitment from them, a real long-term commitment. But I appreciate what y'all doing. I know with the coronavirus like we got going on and everybody being quarantine like, like we are, sometimes we have to do the stuff that we don't normally have to do and this is one of those times. But if, if you get the opportunity to give those folks that's involved in the eight hundred acre area, the opportunity to say their piece, I think it would be well worth putting it off until they get that opportunity. Because if my property was in that area, I would probably have a whole lot more to say and I can, I can just imagine how they feel. But that's, that's all I've got. Thank you. Appreciate what y'all doing.
Thank you, sir. It's my understanding that there are more people, I do want to remind everyone that there is a helpline, it's eight zero three six eight four eight five seven zero, or you can call toll-free at eight seven seven eight five three five two five seven. Trish, is there anyone else who'd like to speak against?
Yes, sir, we have Ms. Sharon Oats and then after her, Mr. Andrico is on the line. Ms. Sharon Oats, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Sharon Oats, eight thirty Rockland Drive, Rock Hill.
Go ahead, Ms. Oats.
Uh, basically what I want to say is, as a third generation um, landowner in this area with around the Sturgis Road area where my parents live, but I'm on Rockland, which is right off Church Road, we've been going through a lot over the last year, making a lot of decisions and a lot of changes. The biggest uh, concern I have is that the property owners are not being notified. Uh, we weren't notified of the um, pump station and different things like that last year and this year. It seems like after talking to people, once um, everything was posted on social media, that's when people started finding out, but we didn't find out ahead of time. It is all, it up to all of us as county taxpayers to get online, look up these agendas, look up these minutes and um, look at it for ourselves. And even when you do, things change before the actual meeting. So that's my concern. I'm all for growth. Um, you know, I'm just, like I said, a third generation um, landowner who bought my grandparents' land, but we also have a lot of family members and friends in this area who we just, if we wanted to live in the city, we would live in the city. And just uh, decisions being made without anybody's um, being able to ask questions and to know what's actually going to happen. I personally called to find out, um, I was told that our land would be um, changing as well and I actually called to find out and nobody has any of these answers. So um, just, just give us some more information, let us do some more research and then um, move on further. Um, but I appreciate what y'all are doing.
Thank you, ma'am. Trish, who's next?
Okay, sir, Mr. Paul Andrico's next and then Nancy will be after him. Mr. Andrico, please state your name and address for the record.
It appears the third time was not the charm for Mr. Andrico. Who is uh, who is next?
Okay, next is Nancy and then after her is the telephone number five zero nine. Nancy, please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, this is John Nance, I'm at uh, twenty-six fifty-five Neely Store Road in Rock Hill. And my comments would be, uh, as a perspective of a, a new Rock Hill resident, I came here from Charlotte. I was involved with the Light Rail Projects up in Charlotte in the late nineties, working with Center City Partners. And you know, the experience that I had with that, uh, working directly with them was that, you know, they were all about participation and process. So at the start of any major economic development initiative, they had a clear timeline and process that they were undertaking to put together the plans, do the studies, solicit input and get where they wanted to go. And the participation that they sought was from the businesses, the citizens, the interested parties, and they gave all of them equal opportunity to be involved throughout the project, not at the time when it came to a vote and not just at the end of a milestone. So I would just encourage you to, to look at those kinds of projects and the success of those kinds of projects and think about how you can use process and participation in this type of initiative to get a better result.
Thank you, sir. Trish, is there anyone else who'd like to speak against?
Yes, sir. Excuse me, with the telephone number, last three digits, one three two, please state your name and address for the record. Let's try this again. If you have the telephone number with the last three digits, one three two.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
All righty then, my name is Richard Harden, I live in Hutchison Estates there, on Quail Drive in Rock Hill. And uh, I have a lot of concerns, we're currently county. Is this going to annex us into the city, which I'd rather not be annexed? I'm not for or against this project per se. Uh, I was an avid NFL fan, but here's something I don't think anybody's considering long-term. Uh, with the problems the NFL's had over the last couple of years with this national anthem and stuff, their, their fan base has dropped about forty, thirty to forty percent nationwide. I for one will not support athletes that won't support our country by standing up for this flag and I drop the NFL. I will not watch another game, I will watch the XFL, uh, or anything else, car racing, but I won't watch NFL no more. And I feel like there's thousands, if not millions, of people in this country that feel like I do. So why in the world, how can we bank on thirty years of tax incentives and breaks and make this kind of agreement for a sport that we don't even know is going to make it fifteen or twenty years down the road? Uh, things change and it needs to be voted on by the population, by the public. In this meeting tonight, we need to postpone this thing until we can have a live meeting where everybody can be there and we can get the information that most of these callers tonight are absolutely right. This is not the way to do a public meeting and absolutely, absolutely, the people need to be able to get together in a public forum, not online virtual, because I can only imagine the hundreds and thousands of, of constituents that don't know how to get, you wouldn't believe what I had to do to just get on the phone call just in. People don't know they got to hit star nine to be able to, to raise their hand. You're giving out the phone number, but you're not telling them to go to star nine and for the last hour and twenty minutes, I've been pulling my hair out trying to just get on here so I could say something. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say, I'm not for or against it, but I certainly don't want to be annexed and the tax incentives, the tax situation certainly has my concern. So uh, anyway, I appreciate you guys and uh, thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. I, I have just been requested to give out the toll-free number again. The number is eight seven seven eight five three five two five seven, again, eight seven seven eight five three five two five seven. The meeting IP is five three zero four two six three eight eight. That is five three zero four two six three eight eight. And I was also texted during that that you do have to hit star nine in order to raise your hand. So please, if you want to speak, you, and you're on the, the line, you hit star nine. Trish, is there anyone else who would like to speak against?
Yes, sir. If you have the telephone number with the last three digits, one nine zero, and you're getting ready to unmute, you have the last three digits, zero six seven, you will be up next. So if you have the last three digits on your telephone number, one nine zero, please go ahead and state your name and um, excuse me, name and address for the record.
My name is Linda Jenkins and I live in McConnell's. Um, I just wanted to say that um, my opinion is that this decision, this vote, needs to be tabled until um, we discover more information about, or the public information about the additional eight hundred or so acres that are part of this deal that nobody knew about, except the parties that benefited it from it. Anyway, and this is a horrible way to have a public forum. If it hadn't been before the guy before me, I didn't know I had to hit star nine to even speak. So um, yeah, just please table this. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we do want to reiterate, if you would like to speak, you hit star nine. Trish, is there anyone else who would like to speak against?
Yes, sir. The telephone number with the last three digits, zero six seven, please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, a home run, I'm in, Paul Andrico.
There he is.
Yeah, four times. And I know how to do this, but I hit pounds nine, not star nine. So imagine how many other people are doing the same damn thing. But anyways, I appreciate you letting me in, but I almost forgot what the hell I was going to talk about and worked on this damn phone for an hour. But anyways, um, first part is, I appreciate all the hard work you do. I know you work diligently and you probably, as Britt says, I am so tired of this, so I understand. First off, the city of Rock Hill had zero hearings. I tried to speak and um, bump was there that night and they would say, no mas, no mas. So they wouldn't let me speak about the Panther deal. So this is the first public hearing we've had and I got to admit, for me, this has been a nightmare. And you know, when you talk about the Constitution, about life, liberty and pursuit of happiness and private property is in the Constitution and I could live more or less with the, with the initial deal, two hundred and thirty acres. And I could live more or less with the, with the initial deal, 230 acres, um, because that's been hatched over and you've all done a good job going over that. It's the 880 acres. What bothers me is, I mean, I probably knew more sooner than most of the public knew, but it's not really something, it was, it was added on to the last minute. I know a lot of you all, let's get this over with and vote for this. But constitution-wise, I don't think this, this Zoom is gonna cut it. Secondly, is, I have, the question I have on these 880 acres is, say, two years, he buys 100 acres and he pays the current taxes, we should say $1,000 for that property. And does the city then annexes them? Then the city gives them 100% tax break. The county gives them 65, and the school district gives, gives them 75 for that land. That's a bargain in a lifetime, if that is true. I think, I heard Christie talk about it on This Morning, and I think that's what I gathered out of it. I'm not sure that is correct. But, um, you know, I believe that you should vote, A, on the first part of the 230 acres and on the second part of the 880, vote to put it back in a workshop, public reading one, public reading two, public reading three. And then if you do that, I think you did your homework. I don't think I've done your homework. I know Joel's been for this for a long, long time, and that's great. Um, but you really need to do your homework more so in a workshop to open to the public is my answer for a compromise. So thank you for your time and, and I'm happy I got in on the fourth time. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, sir. Do want to remind everyone, the phone number is 877-853-5257. The meeting ID is 530-426-388. And if you would like to speak, you must hit star nine. Is there anyone else who is against?
At this time, Mr. Chairman, there are no hands raised.
Just as I did during the, again, someone spoke in favor, we will, we'll continue to take these somewhat out of order if necessary. Would anyone like to speak in favor? If you'd like to speak in favor, please hit star nine or...
Yes, sir. We have one person who just raised their hand. The name is Hart One. Hart One, please say your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Mark Hart, and I live in Charlotte, North Carolina.
Go ahead, Mr. Hart.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you for the opportunity uh, for a few minutes to speak tonight. Uh, you know, I know it's already been a long meeting and, and lots of York County residents have spoken, but, uh, I just want to take a, take a, take a little bit of time just to talk about, uh, our project and to thank all of you, uh, for your service. Uh, as you know, the Carolina Panthers are thrilled, uh, to be coming to Rock Hill as what's been described as one of the most transformational projects maybe in the entire country. Uh, we've gone to this point, moving from, gosh, maybe a year ago, from a concept and an idea to now reality by working very hard together, by working closely with, uh, so many of you, uh, not only in the city of Rock Hill, on the state of South Carolina and, and the folks in York County, and we appreciate that very, very much. This is a great economic story, uh, for all of us. Uh, these are new jobs. This is a shot in the arm for many businesses in York County, uh, both big and small, uh, which is gonna be very critical now in the post-COVID era. Uh, we're talking about stimulus project. We're talking about private investment, about public investment. This is a great economic story, uh, about building things in York County and a great quality of life. It's also about putting $500 million of private investment into the ground in a project worth in excess of $750 million uh, to the city of Rock Hill and to York County. It's been gratifying, very gratifying. We've been able to work so well with businesses in the area, the public sector, taxpayers, uh, and all of you in a bipartisan way. Uh, and I think all of you understand that we're not just building a practice facility. Uh, stadiums have nothing to do with this, and we're building a destination site that's gonna benefit everybody in York County, in York County, Western York County, uh, and all of us in the region. It's also about opportunities for the adults in York County, the next generation of York County, uh, the student athletes, playing games, having events, having employment programs, job opportunities, special programs in the schools, and leveraging the partnership of a worldwide brand like Panthers. York County is going to have a very unique nation set. Professional sports, amateur sports, entertainment, hotels, specialized residential, research, ITech businesses, uh, and healthcare facility that everyone in York County will use the value. Uh, we're talking about world-class healthcare, world-class therapies, rehab, surgery, all in York County. Uh, again, facilities that everybody in York County is gonna benefit from. As many of us said, uh, and the callers have said as well, this has been a project, I, almost a year in the making. Uh, during that time, we've shared our ideas. We've listened to the community. We've gone out and met with many of you and all of you individually. We've studied the locations, we've promoted our vision, and we provided data and models to, on about the benefits to the taxpayers, the businesses, and the schools. Right now, we have over 50 architects, planners, engineers, project managers, lawyers, seemingly working seven days a week and what feels like 24 hours a day. As we move forward, we look forward to working with all of you uh, and building something together that will endure for generations to come. We're ready to get to work. We're ready to start building. And we hope, uh, we hope we approve this tonight, and we look forward to your time, uh, and not to delay this project any longer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there, Trish, is there anyone else in favor?
Not at this time, sir. There are no hands.
I'm going to say it again. The toll-free number is 877-853-5257. The meeting ID is 530-426-388. If you would like to speak in favor, you need to hit star nine. Trish, is there anyone who has raised their hand?
No, sir.
Now wait a couple of seconds, and then we'll call a motion.
We have a hand, sir.
All right.
With the telephone number with the last three digits, 509, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Elizabeth at 741 University Drive, Rock Hill again. Um, I actually really appreciated what the last caller said, but I was wondering where the written-out plan for his concept is. That's all.
Thank, thank you. I believe that was Ms. Sutton who had spoke against earlier. Any other persons who would like to speak in favor? Is there a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close.
We have two more hands, sir.
Uh, sorry, we'll, we will delay. Go ahead.
Um, we have Mr. Patel. Will you please go ahead and state? Ms., hold on one second. Mr. Patel, will you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Dylan Patel, 957 Waverly Avenue, Rock Hill, South Carolina. I'm calling, uh, to let you know that I'm for this project, not just because of what it represents to the area, but what it represents to the U.S. as a whole. Because as this facility gets known for what they're doing with all the medical, as well as the facility itself, and the amateur sports they bring into the area, we are gonna be a destination-known facility that we should be proud of and know that it's in our area. You look at the facilities in Dallas and what they did for the community in Dallas and Minnesota when they built their training facilities. It is well-known what they've done, and everyone in the industry and well as people who travel to those places know exactly what these facilities are about. Just like Charlotte, when they bring in the DNC and RNC, it was tough decisions they all had to make together. But at the end of the day, they made those decisions because they knew it's best for what's, best for the community. I just don't look as this as just a local issue. It's gonna be a national where we, we will be spotlighted and we will be looked upon in the future for other things that may be happening in the area. I understand the concerns of other citizens, but those can be addressed independently later. But at this time, I think we need to move because they've already, there's a lot of stuff that's already been in place with the state government as well as the local, um, governments that we need to move forward with the project. But I appreciate their time. But again, this is just not a local issue. It is, it is a local issue, but it's gonna be a national spotlight once this project is done. And it will be the face of every media and social media as the future comes, to come. Thank you, guys. Thank you for all your, all your hard work that you guys do on city council and especially in this times that we're having right now.
Thank you, sir. I, I want to reiterate, if you would like to speak, you need to hit star nine. I also want to let everyone know, if you have spoken, we, 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 you don't, there's no second on public hearing there is. You, you, if you have spoken, we appreciate hearing your comments, but our rules do not allow you to speak again. Trish, do we have anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Sorry, sir. Kim Oxendine is on the, is next, and then telephone number, last three digits, 729. Kim Oxendine, please go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kim Oxendine. I live at 2550 Neely Store Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina. I would just like to clarify a, so, a statement that Mr. Hart made. He made a statement that said the Panthers are guaranteeing $500 to $700 million in investment. And along with that, he made a statement saying that they have talked with many business owners and property owners. How is it that my family's business directly borders the Panther property and we only had one meeting where they said, oh, no, it's not going to be incorporated? They actually, we raised our hand, we asked the question, and one of their developers came and talked to us afterwards and made a statement that said, oh, no, that's just a conceptual drawing that Mr. Tepper wanted us to put in there. That's not included. Well, now, Friday, or whatever day it was, I've kind of lost track of time, we get this notification that says there's another 800 and some odd acres included, and our property happens to be one of them, plus many of the other properties that are along the area where we live, out near Sturgis Road. And nowhere do I read in any of the 130 pages that there is a guaranteed investment from the Panthers. Thank you for your support and all that you all have done to put into this, uh, meeting.
Thank you. Obviously, that was an against, and again, we are, we will take people out of order uh, just because of the strange nature of this meeting. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Yes, sir. We have the telephone number with the last three digits, 729. If the last three digits, 729, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bukari Robinson. My address is 767 River Crest Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina. So, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm highly in favor for it. I mean, when it comes, I, I just see a big opportunity for it. I see the growth. I just see, I see where there's gonna be an advancement throughout the community. The infrastructure will be brought up to par. It'll be less money spent through our, through our city officials, where some of that money can be put back into our communities to help re-educate some of our urban areas that lack education. I see with them coming that, uh, an opportunity that it brings, it brings growth with new businesses. I think it'd help the small businesses come up within the community. I think it also, would it, would this be a football city USA in the national scale that it'll bring? It'll also bring, it'll bring more than we can even imagine. And, uh, I just feel that a lot of people should come out of their shell and embrace what's going on because with the Panthers coming and with the national scale that it brings and the new opportunity that it brings, it's an opportunity for everybody to advance economically, socially, and with an educational value to it, to help us become a better community. That's all I really want to say.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
At this time, I, I have no more hands, sir.
We're gonna give them 10, 15 seconds to, before we, when we end this, it is over. Um, again, you would hit star nine if you would like to speak.
We have someone, sir. The last phone number, I mean, excuse me, the last digits in the phone number are 1, 143. Please go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Nicole. I live on Sturgis Road. Um, I would just like to state that I don't really have a, a stake in whether the, the general item is passed or not, but I do have concerns over the private properties that were added late in the game and no one was notified. Um, I would like to beg you to please postpone voting on that piece, to please remove those properties. Part of that property belongs to my grandmother. My grandparents worked very hard. They were not rich people and worked very hard to acquire this property. And this is my grandfather's legacy. I have very many memories of spending that time with him on this property. And I am concerned about what the future holds if our property is included in this proposal. So obviously, I am against currently at this time, considering the personal properties that have been included. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? There are no hands raised. One more time, but you would hit star nine if you were interested in speaking. Anyone else?
Yes, sir. We have a, a couple more. If you have the telephone number with the last three digits, 972, I'm getting ready to unmute you, and next will be M. Sisk. Last three digits, 972. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Rick Patterson. My address is on Sturgis Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina. So my main issue that I have, and, and I'm definitely for the additional 270 acres for the initial training facility. However, the 800 acres that was just recently added in, as I was told by Bump Roddy earlier today, that this was an 11th-hour option from the Panthers and that they hadn't really had ample opportunities to evaluate this. And now we are learning this as an 11th-hour option. I don't think it has given us the opportunity to do our due diligence and assess the pros and cons of the project. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, sir. Next, we have M. Sisk. M. Sisk, if you will go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi there. My name is Melissa Sisk, and I'm at 2239 Nations Ford Road, which is in Hutchison Place. And, um, I am not really against the Panthers moving in. I'm a PSL owner, been there for about 18 years, enjoy their games. I also enjoy living in Hutchison Place. And, um, I did go to the meetings early on, when we had our meeting last year, and I met Mr. Hart. had our meeting last year, and I met Mr. Hart and some of these others, and I don't know who it was, but someone assured us that we would not be annexed as a neighborhood and that, really, that Rock Hill had absolutely no interest in annexing us. But a lot has happened since then, and I really was, I guess, alerted when I did hear about this additional eight hundred acres and our property being included in this, because really, we just haven't been kept in the loop. Although at that meeting, we were promised that we would be informed of things, and I really think that it would be nice to just hold on this just for a little bit till we could get a letter, maybe get a reassurance from the people who promised us the first time that this would not happen, so that we can be fully supportive. I want to support it fully and not be scared or wondering what's going to happen. We see other things happening in Rock Hill, and I don't, you know, I want to be able to support it fully. I also do think it's interesting, I guess I'm not aware of how these things work, but how, I would love to hear your responses to what other people have said, and it's unusual for me to think that you're not at this moment allowed to respond. I do find that interesting. I guess maybe there was a different meeting I should have attended that I didn't, wasn't aware of until now, but I would like to hear what you do think about many of these things. But anyway, until then, I would love to just, again, get a letter of something and just ask you to just wait just a little bit more till we can be reassured. But thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Trish, anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Yes, sir. Dee Johnson? Dee Johnson, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, this is her husband, Ron Johnson. We live at nine twenty-five Quail Drive. The only thing that I really want to say is that folks in this neighborhood have lived here for, I don't know, forty years, some of them, forty or thirty-five years or more, and a lot of them don't even know this is going on. We've had to kind of run around and tell folks. Hopefully, some of them are on here, and if they're not, then, you know, maybe I can speak for them. I'm not against it. I'm not really for it. I think it's, it'll probably be good for the community, certainly be good for the kids, but just don't forget, just don't forget these, these kids in this neigh, I mean, these folks in this neighborhood that have lived here all their lives. They didn't, you know, when they, they heard about this, most of them were like, yeah, it's great. They didn't even bat an eye. I mean, Don Lanning never even batted an eye. And I don't know, it just upsets me. I'm sorry. But I really, I've lived here about fifteen years, and I really am worried about them. That's who I worry about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, Trish?
At this time, sir, I do not have any hands showing.
All right. I'm gonna do it one more time. You would hit star nine if you would like to be heard. Is there anyone who would like to be heard on this matter?
We do have another participant, sir. Let's see, Denos, if you will, go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, this is Dennis C. Live at twenty-five seventy-five Sturgis Road, Rock Hill. Just wanted to say that I'm not against the Panthers' initial two hundred and some acres on development, but I am definitely against the additional eight hundred and some acres, and I would really, really appreciate it if you guys would consider that and table the eight hundred acres, but I have no problem with y'all doing the first two hundred and some acres. Appreciate your time, and thank you for your patience through all this, and hope you come to a great decision.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in favor?
Yes, sir. We have Denise Williams. Denise Williams, if you will, state your name and address for the record.
Denise Williams, eleven fifteen Charlie Horse Road, Rock Hill. In no way against the Panthers' facilities or any other growth that they are saying they will bring. I have no problem with the original acreage, no problem with their purchase of the golf course, or the other parcels that they have already purchased. But I do have a problem with the eight hundred and eighty acres being included, and I would ask, as many others have, the initial project is perfectly fine, and please vote no for the time being on the eight hundred and eighty acres. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
At this time, there are no hands, sir.
Seems like every time I say it, someone else raises. I will say again, you would hit star nine if you were interested in speaking. Is there anyone else? Then we will now close it. Is there a motion to close?
Move to close. Move to close.
There's a move, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
So there's now a second. All those, when we go by order. District two, how do you vote?
Close.
District three?
Close.
District four?
Close.
District five? District six?
Yes.
District seven? District seven, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. I vote, I vote close, I vote yes as well. Is there a motion on the main matter?
Move to approve.
Second.
Chairman Johnson? One second. We have a motion by Mr. Hamilton and a second by Mr. Roddy. Mr. Winkler, you have an amendment?
Yes, I do, sir.
Yes, sir.
I make the motion to amend to remove Article Three, Section three oh one C and Exhibit G from the fee agreement. Exhibit E, pre-approved expansion properties from the inner local agreement, and I'll go ahead and say this, and I'll say it again in a few minutes, for the multi-county industrial park agreement, to remove Exhibit B.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
There is a second. Ms. Cox? Since we are only discussing the amendment, Mr. Winkler, well, let me actually begin. Mr. Hamilton, do you consent to the amendment?
No.
Then, Mr. Winkler, you have the floor.
Thank you. I've supported this. I voted for the original Panthers on the first and second rounds, and I think it is the potential to be a very large benefit to the county, and that's why I agreed to the incentives we've done. You know, there's a lot of misinformation about them not paying anything. There will be a lot paid in over time with this. I think it's got a great potential, but my concern is the additional acreage, which is why I made the motion to remove those acres. One of the first concerns I raised a year ago when we started talking about this was the unfair advantage that I feel like this gives the developer of this two hundred and some acres to Hutchinson Properties, because they get the tax deal that we're given, and they qualify for a four percent based on what they're committing to invest. That's state law. That's not something special we're doing for them on that. That's qualifications based on what they are committing to invest. But by the same token, you know, if someone wants to come over here into East Shore Industrial Park and invest, say, three hundred million, they would qualify for about a six percent rate instead of the four that Mr. Tepper's getting with this. I think it puts other parts of the county, unincorporated Fort Mill, Incorporated Fort Mill, Western York County, anywhere outside of this area, at a disadvantage because the developer of the Hutchinson property or the additional eight hundred acres could meet with that manufacturer and say, listen, you put three hundred million in, in East Shore Industrial Park, you're going to be paying six percent. But if you come over here, I've got the opportunity, pre-approved, for this other three hundred acres or a hundred acres here that I can add on to my agreement, and you'll get four percent on your, your investment here. So come over here, and it gives an unfair advantage to the developer of this property for anyone to get any other development anywhere else in the county. That's my reason for being, adding this amendment, and that's, I try to keep it as short as I can, but that's, that's my reasoning on it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cox?
I continue to have concerns. I think this has been just a difficult time with the COVID nineteen for us to be even having this hearing via Zoom. I do want to reiterate that, and I just think that if, if this is something to celebrate and something to be proud and happy about, that we should have done it at a time where we could have actually done that and been transparent. But when it comes to the deal, I know that there has been a lot of work on staff's part and the problems that occurred, and we all know that, that, you know, our finance director didn't even get a hold of this until late January or February, and I think he's done a really good job of doing that. This issue with the additional property, and I appreciate the amendment from Mr. Winkler, essentially, it, it removes the eight hundred and eighty acres, and I definitely think that at a point in time, we'd come back and revisit that, what's, some of the work was done. I think that I've expressed my concern to each of you individually, but I guess I need to ask a couple of questions of staff if I can, because there have been questions that the folks have asked, and so I guess I need to, I don't know who's best to ask this, but if someone could answer the questions of who added the parcels and is there a specific development plan that's associated with them?
Mr. Hudson?
I'm sorry, if I could get the second part of that question, I didn't hear that. The first part, who added the parcels?
Who added the parcels? I guess I'll go ahead. Why did they add them, and is there a specific development plan for any of them?
The parcels were in the agreement since we started, but they were in a different format. They were listed, initially, the owner asked to have a five-mile radius of the property included, where if they purchased properties and chose to include those in the fee, then they would be added at the owner's election. Staff negotiated that down to a one-mile radius when we had second reading. Council at the time informed us, again, they thought that was too broad, and directed us to give a menu of properties that could be picked from by the Panthers. Again, at their election, if they could acquire their properties and chose to add them to the park, they would be added to the plan. As to your questions about the specific plans, I don't know of any specific plans. They have not shared those with me. However, they would have to be consistent with the other development and the restrictions that are placed on, on the property for the two hundred and thirty acres. In addition to those, we've placed some additional restrictions, like they cannot incentivize any type of multifamily development or single-family development. So that's been added to those, and also, any development would either have to be consistent with the underlying zoning on the, that it is zoned for right now, or there is always the potential that they could rezone those properties.
So did I hear, I guess, I'll, I'll say this. The first time that I ever heard about any additional properties was March sixteenth, which was the day after the COVID shut our schools down, the governor shut the schools down. That was the first time that, that our council ever discussed that, and I realize that now folks have gone back and taken a look at what documents were presented by the city, but with, with this, I guess, request out at the outset from the city and from the Panthers for a five-square-mile radius, that was never, that was never presented. I guess my question on the, on the parcels, in this particular case, I guess, this is, this is the map that shows all of the parcels, and the only one that we've ever talked about in terms of the deal has been this green one up here in the corner. And so I guess, does staff, does anyone have any information about whether or not there are plans to annex any of those additional properties?
That would really be up between the current property owner, or unless it was, if the property was transferred to, purchased by the owner, and then between the owner, the current owner and the city of Rock Hill. So I don't know that they have immediate plans, if they're not contiguous with the city limits now, you know, that would create a problem for annexation. But again, that's, would probably be more consistent with how the city of Rock Hill approaches their annexations.
So I guess, do you, do you have any information to answer the question to the constituents about whether or not their property is going to be annexed?
I don't think there's any way to make that determination now, because I think, one, they have to be contiguous. Number two, they, whoever owns the properties, whether it's the Panthers purchased it or the current owner of the property, would have to agree to, or at least the majority of the property owners would have to agree to annex. So it's not something that the owner or the city of Rock Hill can force.
Well, I think there has been forced annexation. Is it your contention that there's not? Ever been forced annexation by the city?
I think there's, I guess it depends on how you define force. I mean, if you have water and sewer service from the city of Rock Hill, you've agreed to take on that water and sewer service in exchange for annexation, then, I mean, I consider that to be, you've made a determination that you are willing to do that. They, you can annex properties under state law if you are part of a larger annexation where the majority of the owners choose to come in.
This, I can't get this way. This green parcel, let me just be real clear. This green parcel actually has a development plan, does it not? It has a development agreement, and that's been posted and presented.
Yes, that is. I don't think it's been approved yet, but it has been submitted and, and voted on by the Rock Hill City Council.
So we know what's going there, and we, and we've seen the plan for that. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. And have you seen any sort of similar plan for any of the rest of the properties?
We have not.
I, I just, what I've heard from folks is that they really wanted to be on board with this, but the fact that we are now allowing properties to come into this where a developer does not even have ownership interest or permission from that property owner to put it in the agreement, is a fundamental, I think, problem. And I guess anyone can now go out and just throw parcels into something that they may eventually want to own, and I think we need to listen to the people. I mean, I really hope that this council will listen to the fact that the folks are not opposed to this. I think they are interested in this, but I think when you do this via Zoom, and when you add these properties at the last minute, and when there's not an opportunity for them to get out and get their questions asked, I think it poses some serious problems, and there's going to be automatic just defensiveness about that. I think that if we were able to move that or give them an opportunity to do that later, we could have the consensus of others. I also think that these parcels that are being added, there are many of them that are not even consistent, what, what is allowed in the development agreement, excuse me, in the FLO agreement, to incentivize that, to provide incentives on property that doesn't even allow it, and the comp plan doesn't allow it, that's, that's the council making a decision about things that the people have come out and voted on previously and said, this is what we want. And so giving these incentives that are completely different than what they have spent time and effort on, and that we encourage people to be a part of, is simply a problem. Folks want to know, what are they facing? What are they facing in terms of annexation potentially? It seems to me that when you look at this map, when you look at this map, it's not as if there's an attachment there. I mean, these other parcels over here aren't even contiguous to one another, and it looks as if, and from, from reading online from other development agreements, it looks as if there is another plan that folks want to be made aware of. I think just simply giving them some time, giving them some time to take a look at this deal, give them some time to ask their questions. Give them some time to ask their questions. Give them some time to actually have a public hearing. And I think that that's what the constitution calls for. Honestly, that's. That's the right thing to do. And so I I do support the amendment and I and I hope that other council members will see that. You know, I I heard some comments about, well, there's only. There's only twenty five percent or there's only a hundred and thirty two parcels and this percentage of that shouldn't one person, if it's you, if it's you in that situation. Isn't one person entitled to public transparency? Aren't they allowed to know what's happening? Are we giving? A developer. Leverage over potential future development? That causes some issues with the annexation. You heard from the. The individuals who have a business directly below this, Dave Oxman, he supports he supports development more than I do. He would love to see this happen, but to be told. To be told basically that your property is in here for six days before. A a public hearing that's on Zoom and not to be able to to go get those questions answered. I don't think it's unreasonable for for him to to have those concerns. And and I did speak with other folks and and I don't want to drag my comments out because I've tried to speak with you all and I know that, but. I I'm I'm begging you. I'm begging you to 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 listen to these folks, put yourself in that situation. There's certainly no reason why we can't. I mean, the governor's lifting things today. There certainly is no reason why we can't push this. To. Consideration of that particular issue, take it out, push it to July and then that gives these folks the opportunity to do something about it. And and to have and to make it better, to make them supportive of it.
Ms. Love.
I think she's on mute.
I was. I was on mute. I know y'all wish I was on mute all the time. So. You know, one of the things that Larry Bird said was that he hoped we put put ourselves in in position of taxpayers and and business owners. And I put myself in that position. Twenty four seven as as a council representative, as someone who's elected to look out for the people. And if and if everybody will remember, I was the first hard no on this on this whole deal. And I was a no because I was fearful of of what this might look like and what this might do. Not to the county, but but to the whole area of Rock Hill and. You know, it just, I wasn't comfortable with it. And so I I was a no and I let y'all know that I was a no. So I kind of got left out of a few few meetings and things because. I guess nobody realized that the people that are the no's are the ones that need to be convinced. So. I do want to address some of the things that people have said. Because one of the things that's very important to me. And it's it's one of the hardest things to accomplish in government and that is to get people to be aware of things before it's in their backyard. And and it's it's the hardest thing. It's why I have a Facebook page like I do. It's why I communicate like I do. Because I want everybody to know what what's happening. There was a time when I didn't know and bad things happened. So awareness is very is very is very difficult, but it's very important. And I represent an area where developers are always looking for land. There's no notice needed. We don't have to tell anybody, hey, you know what? This developer, that developer, that other developer. They're they're looking for the land. They're looking. They're looking to develop. And in this case. We have a a company, not necessarily individual, but a company who happens to be a billionaire and it really doesn't matter how much money the man has. The good news is he's got enough money and he's got enough interest to want to come to Rock Hill. And I think for a long time, everybody was very much in so support of that. I think everybody on council wasn't in support of that with the exception of of myself. As the time has gone on and the negotiations have gone on, I have asked the questions that I felt were important. I have put myself in the position of taxpayers and business owners. And I believe that this is going to be a great opportunity. I believe that there are people who are fearful. I believe there are people that are scared that their property is just going to be taken in, that they're going to wake up one day and. And they're going to have somebody at the front door with, you know, a sign that says sold on it. But but that's not that's not the way this works. The way this works is. South Carolina has a state law that protects property rights. This county council looks out for property rights. We don't want we don't want. Listen, I'm big on property rights. Anybody that's got properties is big on property rights. So there's some misconceptions. South Carolina state law protects our property rights. It takes seventy five percent ownership and seventy five percent of land value before something can be annexed. The Panthers are not looking to take. They're not looking to take property. And everybody's used the term included. Everybody has used the has said these parcels are included. They're not included. They're simply being considered. Just like all the other parcels in York County might be being considered. The better the parcel, the more consideration it's going to get. More consideration it gets, the higher the value of the property. So in a way. For some of these people, it's it's really good news and you're going to have people in your in your district, you see that that want to sell to the Panthers. But you know what? They're going to have to have their neighbors all in in order in order to be able to even do that. So. I don't think there was a notice needed for this. I think people might be surprised to to see their properties on a map highlighted, excuse me. But I think there's very little of that that will ultimately even be considered by the Panthers. If I were to draw a map of that district after looking at it and getting to know a little better. I'd have probably marked those same ones, especially those that are down there by the Cataba River because we've just put nineteen hundred acres down there. That will always be a green space. And if you don't think that gave an incentive to developers. To build in that area, you're mistaken because everybody would like to be down there adjacent to a nineteen hundred acre green space, which now they can market as an amenity. So. Here's what my my goal would be at this point. I am. Not concerned about the properties that are down there. I think because the owners of those properties are in the driver's seat. I think we do need to hold a meeting and explain this to those develop to the not to the developers, I'm sorry, but we need to explain this. To those to those parcel owners because tonight there is so much misinformation. And I I know people are concerned. I know people are scared, but. There are reasons. That those parcels are on that map. And I think we can explain that. We have not suggested any zoning changes. I I think I agree that we need to answer their questions and alleviate the concerns and assure these reassure these folks. Of just exactly what it means that their parcels are shown on on a map. You know, the the ones that are adjacent. That just makes sense. I would I would certainly think that those people would expect to be. Probably bought if not by the Panthers by by. I mean, they're going to get offers on those properties just simply where they where they are. You know, I've got an adjacent property that's within it's not adjacent, but it's within. You know, it's within a mile and a half and there've already been offers, but you know what? It's not for sale. It's not for sale and who gets to say whether or not it's for sale or not, the people that own it? And and so I just I think there's a lot of. Fear in the air. I think people think that their properties can just be taken. And that their properties are already included included in a plan. I mean, we're asking for what is the plan for these properties? These properties have homes on them. So the plan is for those to continue to to be residences and homes and. And and I I just think we need to alleviate that those concerns for the people. So I'm I'm gonna I'm gonna stick with the with the plan tonight. I'm gonna I'm gonna vote to to move move forward with this and. I'll keep the call rolling in the direction that we've been headed now for eleven months as a county.
Mr. Roddy.
Good evening. If y'all thought I wasn't on the meeting early, I was actually headed home from work on my phone. So I finally got home and was able to get set up so you can. See me sitting down there. First off, I want to say. There's been a lot of misinformation distributed right here at the last minute. And I took several phone calls over the weekend and throughout today. Trying to address and clear up some of those misconceptions and some of the misleading information. One of the callers that called in, I did state that this was kind of thrown at us in the eleventh hour. And what I meant by that was the actual properties was thrown in at the eleventh hour. This thing started out. With Project Avalanche and the Panthers wanting a five mile radius, just as as county manager has spoken to earlier. And that was just too broad. So when this finally got closer to the goal line, we went back and addressed. This five mile radius and we said that was too broad. We wanted to narrow it down for us within a one mile radius and if they could. Specifically identify some properties. And at that point, I think we actually did the citizens. Of Rock Hill and the property owners a huge favor because had they not narrowed it down and said, this is the area. You know, two, three, four years down the road, you know, someone's interested in a property, they have no idea. Who's coming knocking. They maybe would have sold it short. Now, if someone comes to that immediate area looking to purchase their home. Or 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 acreage, they can buy a shield. It's probably has something to do with the Panthers. And 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 being in that sense. That property is probably worth more now since it's been identified as an area of interest by the Panthers. So I think we've really done the citizens and the property owners a favor of getting this area. Shrunk down to be more specific. Even though it doesn't come with any. Immediate plans. It doesn't change their property taxes. It doesn't change how much they're paying into property taxes. And just as Allison, Councilman Love spoke, I mean, Councilperson Love spoke. The city of Rock Hill just can't annex it into the city. It can't be taken by eminent domain. So. You know, I'm on board with her as to what kind of notification should we have given or could we have given? You know, if you ask anyone in legal, you know, there's no legal notification that should have been sent, you know, I don't know how we contact. Potential property owners because and and one of the things that was said time and time again is that. My property is included in the deal. Your property is not included into the deal. The only way those profits can be included into the deal. Is if it's sold to someone with interest with the Carolina Panthers, then it. Could become. On the same structure or tax structure that that the Panthers is seeking with the the current proposal. So. My my comment to those individuals and property owners. Who have property in in the Sturgis Road area and other areas out near the river is that your property is not part of the deal. It's just been identified. And you don't have to sell your property, you know, it was, I think Billy Hagler did an outstanding job early on in the in the. In the meeting saying how many actual property owners, who owns the largest stakes of land? And and how that would have to take place and 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 I do. Respect everyone's property rights and everyone has a right to sell or not to sell, just as 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 Council. Councilperson Love spoke of, some people will be eager to sell to the Panthers. One of the callers mentioned that it's a generational farm. You do not have to sell your farm if you don't want to. Those are your rights. No one can come in and take your farm and claim imminent eminent domain for. Panthers to build whatever they want to do with it. That cannot happen. And I think that is one of the things that we can have. These after meetings to really kind of clarify and hopefully the city of Rock Hill will will clarify their process, their procedures. For annexing properties into the city. And one of the callers that I spoke to earlier, Michelle Patterson. I assured her that I would get the county manager and and the county attorney to address. Annexation and to address eminent domain. So if. David Hudson would like to to speak on. Eminent domain. I think he he addressed partially part of the. Annexation, but at this time, if he could, if you have any comments about how eminent domain would work. And and reassure the citizens out in that area that that probably is not an available option. And if it was an available option, what type of project would have to be facing that area before it can be deemed an eminent domain?
Mr. Roddy, I'm not going to try to speak on eminent domain. I prefer to have our attorney do that. As that is a legal issue. I mean, if he's able to speak to that. I will say the Panthers certainly have given us no indication that that is their intent. So it is not a consideration that we we considered, but I will ask if. Mr. Kendry is available to to speak to that?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hudson, Councilman Roddy. There is a constitutional prohibition on utilizing condemnation for a economic development project. And that is the Article One, Section thirteen of the South Carolina Constitution. There's a limited exception if there's a condemnation for a public use. But the equation in this case has to bridge the gap between the county economic development project. And the city's use of condemnation, if I understand the concern and question correctly. So the condemnation property has to be owned by to be part of the. Project of the county, it has to be owned by the Panthers. And for the city to condemn. First of all, they can't condemn for an economic development project. So this is not their economic development project. It's ours. So there's a hard or strained. Leap to make to say that they can condemn and then somehow transfer the property to the Panthers. Because what they're lacking is the public use because first and foremost, they can't bootstrap it into a. County economic development project. So I believe there is a. Insurmountable hurdle for them to utilize that mechanism for in furtherance of a county economic development project. That said, they can always utilize economic, excuse me, they can always utilize condemnation on their part. For a city public use. And in that case, they have to articulate what the public use is and then move through the condemnation statutory practice. But the to be part and parcel of. This economic development project, I find that would be a strained relationship between the project and the city.
Thank you, my Kendry, and and I would like to just kind of put that in really as simple terms as I can put it. That's not going to happen. I can I can put my name and state my claim on that procedure actually taking flight and actually happening to those property owners in that area. But I would like to go on record to say I would not be supporting the amendment. But what I will assure citizens of York County and those residents in that area is that I will push and agree. That we do have some type of meeting clarifying, answering questions. And really, and and one of the callers asked about some kind of letter going out to assure them. What their rights are and how all this work. I think we can get to that point, but I would love to entertain. This after tonight's vote and and assure people that we can go back and address those concerns. And just as we've heard from the county attorney, those misleading. Concerns or open ended concerns throughout the weekend and late last week. They've been addressed by our legal and so I think we are on solid ground to be able to tell our citizens that. The city is not going to be a threat to. Seize your property or use eminent domain or just willy nilly annex you into the city. And and from what I understand with the property as well. If the property is sold to the Panthers, they can then ask for it to be annexed into the city. They can then petition the city to rezone and allow things that's not currently able to be done with the property as it stands right now. So those options all don't come into effect until. The property is sold to anyone with interest with the Panthers and the Panthers have to be the stakeholders. But the one thing I want. Um, but the one thing I want to emphasize is that property owners, you do not have to sell your property if we don't want to. And and I'll go into some of the reasons why I'll support the overall deal when we get to it. But as for the um amendment to the motion, I would not be supporting the amendment to um um I would not be supporting the amendment.
Dr. Blackwell?
I'm good.
Mr. Hamilton?
Well, this may sound funny, but in a way I was almost encouraged by several of the comments from the callers because those concerns seem to be born not from the merits of the deal or the facts, but rather in informational deficit or perhaps the wrong information. Um, I think Mr. Hudson has done a good job of clarifying some of those issues. I would like him to just maybe provide a little bit more explanation about the actual treatment of those properties. Um, and the conditions under which the tax treatment would actually change. Because as Councilman Roddy has just stated, nothing is changing for these property owners. They're not part of the deal. But I think there's a lot of question out there still, and I would like perhaps David to give us just a little bit more explanation of of the treatment.
Okay, speaking of the external par- properties that are that are not part of the initial campaign.
Exactly.
Uh, what we've tried to do is is pare this down from a one mile radius that was the council asked us to remove at second reading, which we did. And enter get some clarity on what what are the parcels that the owner would have some interest in pursuing? Now, we did not try to get them to name every single property that they have an interest in or that um or or the list they gave us does not mean they are interested in every one of those properties. It's it's to be looked at as kind of a menu of properties that at their election, they could pursue in at some point in time. And if they had a willing seller, they would first need to acquire the property from that seller. And if the zoning suited the type of development that was allowed within the project, then they could elect to put that in the project. Uh, so there would be a number of hurdles to properties that did not match the zoning that was required. They first, they would have to get the current property owner, an agreement from the current property owner to sell the property. And after that, they would have to ensure the property is owned properly and that the type of development that they would put on the property was actually eligible to be incentivized. And again, we've put some additional restrictions. First, they would have to meet the project description of the properties that were going on the initial two hundred some odd acres. And um if they did that, they could be included. However, there are some things allowed on the initial parcel that would not be allowed on the additional parcels. Those primarily being a mixed use of any kind of apartments or single families not permitted on any of the property being incentivized. But uh apartments, multifamily would not be allowed at all on the external pop- properties. Uh, they are allowed as a mixed use component on the initial two hundred and thirty, two hundred and seventy acres, but would not be allowed on the external properties. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and um I appreciate your explanation. I also obviously sympathize with a lot of the callers because I think a lot of the fear comes from the unknown and not necessarily the facts. Um, with that, I'd like to proceed with voting on the amendment.
I will uh finish up our discussion. I I thought Ms. Love was uh extremely eloquent and I thought she was dead on correct. She was a no vote who needed time to become a yes vote. And isn't that all the people whose property is now being drawn into the map is what they're asking for? They're asking for time. They're not asking not to be in it. They're asking for time so that they can become yes votes. And I am, I'm uh, I have had my issues with this plan, but this to me just this this hasn't made a lot of sense that we would, that two hundred and thirty acres becomes over eleven hundred acres. And the very people who own the property aren't given the time before we approve it. It's, you know, that'd be great, like, yeah, I put your land in that zone. Now I'll sit down and tell you about it. You don't get, that is the official cart before the horse. The goal should be to make sure people are educated enough that they understand it. And certainly the times we're living in coronavirus COVID nineteen, that it is hard to get out information. We should, there should be, we should approve this deal tonight. The Panthers should be able to move forward on two hundred and thirty acres. We should not, under any circumstance, allow these parcels, which our own land use plan does not allow them. Not a single property over towards along Sturgis Road area allows anything that would qualify for an incentive today, which means the Panthers will have to buy it. They'll have to annex it into the city and then they'll get it rezoned to what they want. That that is the reality of what we will see. And whether that is good or bad for that community it it is can be debated at a later date, but it's not what our land use plan calls for. I will, I will support this motion to amend to remove all of these parcels. We will do a call vote. District two, yea or nay on the motion? I'm muted.
Still on mute, Allison.
There we go.
Got it. I'm a nay.
Mr. Winkler?
I am a yes on the motion.
Mr. Roddy?
I'm a nay.
Ms. Cox?
Yeah.
Dr. Blackwell?
No.
Mr. Hamilton?
A no on the motion. Amendment, I should say.
I am a yes as to amendment. The amendment fails by a vote of four to three. We are back to the main motion. Mr. Hamilton made the motion, therefore he is first up. Mr. Hamilton?
Right, thank you, Michael. Now I'd like to take some time to hear from staff because I do think it's important that we air as much as possible on the side of transparency and obviously relying on technology is not ideal, but is unfortunately the circumstance that has been dealt to us. Um, I would like to hear from staff just to be able to provide some history and background. If we could please explain the process of, you know, how we began this deal, where the deal started, where we ended up, how it was improved and and so forth.
Sure, I'll speak to that. And I'd just like to kind of take us through the chronological history of this. Uh, indulge me for a minute. I mean, this was initially something, as I understand it, that the city of Rock Hill reached out to the uh ownership and expressed their interest in finding a site and ha- having the ability to locate the project in Rock Hill. Uh, they identified a site and coordinated details with the state of South Carolina that put together a fairly ambitious um incentive package for the project. Uh, the county's participation really began when uh when Rock Hill took this on as a project to fund the infrastructure that would be required to make the site ready uh for the type of project they were pursuing. Uh, the proposal would, uh, Rock Hill would give up some or all of their tax revenue and the county and the school district would also consider those concessions to to create a revenue stream that could be available to pay bonds for uh the site infrastructure. That site infrastructure was identified to be about two hundred and twenty-five million dollars. And in order to get the amount of revenue that was required to pay the debt, uh, we ended up with a tiered system where the city of Rock Hill agreed to give up a hundred percent of their property tax revenue. The school district was in at seventy-five and the county agreed to be in at sixty-five percent. So over a thirty-year period, that would theoretically generate enough funds to pay the principal and interest on a two hundred and twenty-five million dollar debt issue that would be limited to paying the infrastructure for the site and some of the ancillary improvements for roadways in the vicinity that were necessary as part of the TIA to make that site a workable site for for this type of project.
Okay, so it's, obviously, David, I I don't mean to cut you off, but I think you're done. It's kind of hard on Zoom to tell whether or not you're actually done speaking. Um, so Dave, what you're saying is that the proceeds from the revenues, the sixty-five percent, that's not going back to the Panthers. That money is being diverted to pay for the infrastructure improvements that are required due to the traffic impacts or other impacts from the site itself.
Yes, there'll be an entity established, a trustee of sorts, that the all these tax funds would uh as I understand it, come to the county as normal and then we remit those to the trust uh that would hold the funds until the debt payments are due and those debt payments would be made out of that trust. So it's not a check that's issued issued to the Panthers or any individual. It's a check that's uh it issued by the county for all the taxing entities that would be used strictly for payment of the debt.
So, and I think this is important, so I want to stay on it for a moment because when I talk about the misconceptions of this deal, one of them is that the funds, the sixty-five percent, we're just giving that money back to the Panthers. And that's not the case. They're paying that money in. That money's then being diverted to pay the infrastructure. So this is not a blank check back to them of sixty-five percent of the revenues by any means. Um, and I think that's important to that we take note of that because I think a lot of the folks out there seem to think that we're just giving sixty-five percent back and then we're also funding revenues from somewhere else. Um, so you're saying basically there aren't current revenues that are being used to pay for this infrastructure?
No, that's the, it would only be the taxes generated from the improvements they make on the site. And the the remaining thirty-five percent for on on behalf of the county and twenty-five percent for the school district would be included in their tax revenues as they come in.
So speaking of that thirty-five percent, when do we begin to anticipate those revenues coming in and what do they look like?
Well, first there have to be, has to be some development that actually occurs on the property. So that that takes some time. And by the time they start actually paying taxes on there, we're estimating that's a three or four-year period. So it's going to take a few years before we actually start seeing those revenues. And I think that um, you you know, as as development comes online, they pay more taxes and we've got some pretty involved spreadsheets that demonstrate how much is generated in each year, generated in each year, how much of that gets applied toward toward the debt and how much or when there may be a surplus of those types of revenues. Uh, if I think if you want specific dollar amounts, I'll probably let our treasurer, Kevin Madden, talk about um those specific numbers if if that's what you'd like to hear.
Well, I'm curious because I think in whenever we consider anything, we have to consider what the alternative is. Um, I'd like to know what those numbers look like compared to, and these are things that we know, but I'd like for you to share with the public so that they understand what the numbers look like compared to what this site is currently generating in revenues.
Okay, I'm gonna let Kevin talk about that.
Mr. Hamilton, um, the revenue is expected to really start coming to the county by twenty twenty-five. There should be some coming in in twenty twenty-four. The initial revenue stream, and again, this is, all of this is based off the investment model that the Panthers gave me, okay? So that and the interest rate at this point is unknown as well. The investment stream again should start coming in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five with the discounted revenue fee being over two hundred million dollars, um, two million dollars in twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty growing to over five million, twenty thirty-five growing over seven and a half million, twenty forty over ten million. And somewhere between twenty forty, twenty forty-five, hopefully the debt will be paid off. And this again is dependent on multiple variables. At that point in time, you're looking at picking up an additional north of thirty million dollars in revenue once that debt is paid off.
And that's compared to what is that site currently generating in revenue?
Um, the site right now is owned in Ag and it's literally bringing for comparison purposes, what I'd like to look at is the warehouse distribution that would have been going on that property. And that revenue would have generated, you know, assuming no fee giving to a warehouse distribution, three million dollars. That revenue would basically be equivalent to the five hundred million dollars of revenue the Panthers will be really from day one when they start breaking ground.
Okay, well, you know, let let me just conclude with this. I mean, I can't imagine being a county that doesn't get to debate things like this. We're so enormously fortunate to be sitting here in the midst of uncertainty, both economically and and socially and everything else going on, discussing what they've committed to as a as a billion-dollar deal, a billion-dollar shot in the arm, um, which is basically a countercyclical stimulus for this area. Just about any other community in the country, let alone the world, would love to have this opportunity. Um, so that's what's really at stake here. And we need to be very clear, an investment like this has never been seen in York County. And of course, because it's unprecedented, there's a greater degree of visibility and and more attention paid to the agreement. Um, you know, the county, I think, did a tremendous job of putting the the documents available online. I can't think of a time, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but I can't think of a time that's ever been done with any fee law agreement ever negotiated. Obviously, this one is is unique. Um, and I think it's it's important that we are as transparent as possible. Um, but I really do think the staff has done just a tremendous job in negotiating this agreement and getting it to a place where the numbers really start to make sense for the county and for taxpayers and to make sure that there aren't additional revenues, current revenues that are going into the project that would create a deficit for the county. Um, I can assure you, the staff has done a tremendous job of making sure that taxpayers are protected here and that we don't have a deficit with this project. Um, obviously, we heard the concerns earlier about sites that could potentially be a part of this. I'd like to reiterate, no one is taking anyone's property. Um, everyone would, of course, have the opportunity to sell, but you know, obviously, those concerns, I think, are largely unfounded. I, again, no one's taking anyone's property and that's one of those fear of the unknown thing. I'll also say, uh, you know, a lot of the concerns seems to arise not from the merits of the project, but from concerns about the process. And I think that's an important distinction. Um, it's our job on council to consider what is best for the county and to think as long-term as possible. And when you're talking about an investment of this magnitude, obviously, the stakes could certainly not be higher. And I can't imagine trying to explain to someone five, ten, twenty, or thirty years from now that this council whiffed on a two billion dollar opportunity because um, you know, some there were some issues with Zoom. And that would be pretty unfortunate to uh to miss out on an opportunity like that. Um, and as a matter of fact, I think it's almost funny to try to think about the future and explaining that to people twenty or thirty years from now. Obviously, like I said, it's our job to think long-term and to consider the merits of the project. Um, I may share some of the concerns with process and obviously I really wish that we were in person in our county chambers. No one wishes for this opportunity. I would love to be able to be able to sit in front of this council because I'm proud of this project. I'm proud of this vote and I'm proud to support it because this means everything, not just to this county um right now, but the potential return far into the future is just staggering. And to walk away from it would just be incredibly myopic and unfortunate. Um, I'm really glad to support it and I look forward to hearing everyone else's viewpoints.
Mr. Roddy?
Oh, I thought, I didn't know I was up next. Okay. Okay, all right. First off, um, I want to, I want to start off by saying this is not a stadium. You know, the Panthers are not building a stadium here in Rock Hill. They're building a complex that includes a practice facility, that includes a medical facility. Obviously, they've been talking with with someone in the medical to bring a a hospital of some sort uh with with research and therapy and and this world-class medical here in Rock Hill. There's hotels that are going to be planned. There are class, a office space that's going to be planned. There's uh commercial retail that's going to be planned. You have restaurants. You have shopping. Uh, this is going to be a destination. This is not just where the team's going to come down to Rock Hill, practice, get in the cars and go home. This is going to be a world-class major attraction that's going to sit right here in Rock Hill and inside of York County. You know, we all travel across the world and across the country, visiting destinations that we don't have in our own backyard. And we fully anticipate this destination right here in Rock Hill to be one that many across the country that will be taken apart in visiting as well because we know um our bread and butter around here in South Carolina and definitely here in York County, we put so much on tourism. And we're seeing the impacts now that if we don't have tourism in our community or in our county, we have an economy around here that looks like what we got doing is that looks like what we got during this COVID-19. And that's a very stagnant economy right now here in Rock Hill with restaurants struggling, hotels struggling, businesses that, that service those industries are struggling right now. So just imagine coming out of this COVID-19, whether it's two weeks or another month or so, it's going to take a while to get wheels turning. Some businesses may not get to open back up, but we have the opportunity right here tonight to, to set the stage of Rock Hill and York County's own economic stimulus package, right here in York County, with what David Tepper and the Carolina Panthers are looking to bring here to our county. You know, this thing is shovel-ready. They have the hard hats in hand, they have the shovels in hand, ready to, ready to do business here. And like Joe said, other communities across the country would be licking their chops to, to put something like this in their backyard that's going to generate a tax base, going to generate educational opportunities, going to generate job opportunities, let alone the travel industry. You know, we, we, in this area, Rock Hill, Fort Mill, Clover, York Tigger Cay, everybody in this immediate community goes out of its way to put on events in their respective communities, to bring people to this county, to spend money at our hotels, to spend money at our restaurants, to spend money at our grocery stores, drugstores, gas stations, our shop and retail outlets. This is going to be one of those destinations that can compete with any of them across the world. We, we've seen it happen out with the Dallas Cowboys. You know, people visit that, that mecca, that football mecca, to see Jerry's World. And people are going to come to Football City, USA, to see what David Tepper and his group has to offer. Because the Panthers is not just a Carolina brand, it's a worldwide brand. And it's one that I'm sure many across this country, whether you're a Colts fan, like one of the callers said earlier, or you're a New England Patriots fan, if you are in the immediate area, if you're coming to visit Carowinds, or you're coming to visit downtown Fountain here in Rock Hill, or you're going to visit Rattensfield, you will set foot on the grounds that, that this group is about to put here in Rock Hill. And I think it just magnifies what we've done so well over the years, even upon the name Football City. That's going to magnify that tenfold or a hundredfold. And I think from the start, from the onset, I knew Rock Hill, just off the interstate, was a prime location. You know, other areas threw their name in a hat, Lancaster County threw their name in a hat, some parts of Fort Mill threw their name in a hat, and, and even up seventy-seven north of Charlotte. But we know what we got right here in Rock Hill, and the Panthers have really chosen the best location that they could possibly move their venue to in their headquarters. You know, one of the callers stated earlier that, oh, this is just a hundred and fifty jobs. No, this is bigger than just the Panthers organization. With the conversation taking, taking, taking hold months ago, it was already said that Fortune One Hundred companies would be recruited to come here, Fortune Five Hundred companies would be recruited to come here. So how do you turn your back on those opportunities? How do you turn your back on the medical? And I mentioned when I was on, on WRHI on Friday, that if we needed another hospital that could handle what we're going through right now, five years to come, we'll have another medical facility here that could possibly have beds that would be available to service our community's health needs. One of the biggest things going on in this country right now is people being able to have access to healthcare. Some people that live out in rural areas can't make it to a, a, a hospital as close nearby. We, we went through a thing several years ago on, on county council, with trying to make sure those people in the rural areas, that, that not so close to the city limits, have a medical facility within a certain, certain range, or have ambulances staged so that if something happened to mom, granddad, or uncle, that a service will be close by. We, we've dealt with those things. And here is an outfit coming to our community, saying that they're going to have these type research facilities, these type medical facilities right here on their acreage. And this is not going to be one of the things that lag behind or, or gets built later. This is going to be coming in early on into the investment. And I can't stress enough how this deal came to, to the area, basically in a, in a four-hundred-million-dollar package. And at that point, I said, it wasn't good enough. I wasn't all on board. And, and those of you who know what we've gone through on this council, I was not the first one to raise my hand, but I'm one of the biggest sports fans we have on council. I've traveled for sports, whether it's football, baseball, basketball. I'm, I'm just a sports person. I was very reluctant to, to raise my hand, along with council, council member Love. But through the give and take, and, and when Kevin Madden, Michael Kendry, David Husker had an opportunity to sit face-to-face with the negotiating team for the Panthers, and the Panthers realized what was important to us, we realized what was important to them, and our team was able to pull together and push for this to become not only a four, five-hundred million-dollar deal, but a billion-dollar guarantee of two phases of five-hundred million dollars each. You know, when you do your homework throughout the state, when Boeing came to Charleston, I think that deal topped out at seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars. They were given incentives to bring the deal there. When BMW came to the state of South Carolina, I think it was back in the nineties, they were given incentives to come. So I don't think people have much heartache with the incentives. I think several callers expressed their support for the original deal. And I know, being in the eleventh hour, properties were identified, but like I said earlier, they were asking for a five-mile radius around their property, and wasn't willing to disclose an area of interest. We had them shrink that area of interest, identify some properties that have yet to be purchased, have yet to be talked about. But if, if they purchase them down the road, if your family's willing to sell them to the Panthers, it becomes part of the deal. And, correct me, Kevin, and, and staff, if these properties are purchased, the tax value that we're currently collecting on them cannot go down. We, we're not going to reduce those property taxes on the current, at the current value. They can only just be included, because we're not going to give out any more incentives to include those additional properties. And so my question to staff is, if those properties are purchased, those current tax values at the time of purchase will remain on our county books throughout the duration. Is that a, is that an accurate statement?
This, the incentives we were offering, offering for the initial parcels would be offered for this parcel. However, if there was investment on the properties, certainly that would increase the amount of taxes they paid. But as a failsafe, we put in the agreement that in no case can they be less. So more than, they, they would more likely grow because there would be a new investment on the property. But even if they did not, they cannot pay less taxes than what was currently be paying, being
So I, I, so I, I used analysis on, on Friday, and correct me if I misspoke, if we're currently collecting three thousand dollars on said property that they're looking at out near Sturgis Road or, or out near the river. We'll continue to collect a minimum of three thousand dollars. That value of that, that collection would not go below three thousand dollars.
That is correct.
Okay. So, you know, how, how do we, how can someone justify that, that this is not a good deal for the county, or this is not a good deal for the, for the immediate area, because it has all the ingredients that we base our success on here in this county? Because without tourism, without the job boost that we know this is going to produce, and, and it's amazing, and it's a good time to know that the Panthers, even during this time where things are, are being pushed back and the, the, the season may be threatened, the revenues may be threatened, they're still sticking with their commitment to come here. They could have easily pulled up and said, wait a minute, we don't know if this next season is even going to happen. We don't know if, the uncertainty. But they're on track and have an, an opening date in mind, and, you know, delaying this thing any further would jeopardize that, would jeopardize the investment. And so, man, I'm just excited, I was excited to, to stand up and say that I wasn't for this agreement back in January. But I'm just as proud today to stand up or sit down here in my, in my home and say that I'm supporting this, because we did make some great changes. We did put some measures in that would protect York County citizens and taxpayers. There's, York County, we're not on the hook for any of the borrowing that takes place. If, if it doesn't generate the, the revenue or the tax base, and, and there's even talks of the, the bonds being paid off earlier, and that the county's seeing an overall big boost to the bottom line in our general fund. And there's talks of paying it off early for the school districts to, to get back into a bigger portion of the revenues. So, you know, having said that, you know, the Panthers know what they're doing financially. Our staff knows what it's doing financially. We've been kept, we've been kept abreast about some of the changes and things that were going along the way. And so I'm just excited to, to say that I will be supporting, just as I made the second, to, to bring the Panthers one step closer, and hopefully our final step. And one more thing that I will add when we're talking about things that we were able to put in the deal or take out of the deal. One of the things that came up within the last week or two was that there was still a possibility that the Panthers could use a portion of that two-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars to go for the interchange. We were able to get that language included into the agreement that they cannot use a portion of the two-twenty-five to go to the interchange. So we thought that would, would ultimately seal the fate of basically a, a six, six-one, seven-zero council vote. And it's still not good enough. So we could talk all the way through the kickoff of opening season, opening day for the NFL, there's still going to be some people, whether they own council or in the public or in the community, that's not going to support this deal regardless of what we do. But I think the citizens have entrusted all seven of us to make the best decision that, that it could do for its respective districts. And, and, you know, you know, I, I respect Christie, I respect Robert, I respect Michael, and those who are not, maybe not going to support it. But in my heart, and I think in their hearts, they know this is the, the, the right deal or the best deal going forward, not just for now, but the future of York County. And that's all I have.
Ms. Love, unmute yourself and please feel free to talk.
So I want to reiterate one of the things that Councilman Roddy said, and that is that, you know, this, this fee and it's not, well, the, the whole deal is a little different than, than a lot of the others, because the money that they are saving in taxes is, a lot of that's going back into infrastructure, where a lot of the times when we do a fee in lieu of taxes, York County pays for the, for the infrastructure. So this, this is very different than, than a lot of the ones that we've done. Also, I hate that we have muddied the water with some additional parcels that I, I feel very strongly that we need to have a meeting and clarify for those people exactly what that means. And, you know, for the last month, we've seen a deficit in business. We've seen businesses that have closed, we've seen businesses that have struggled to stay open, we've seen businesses that have stayed open to keep people employed. And, you know, it's Sales Tax Day in South Carolina, and a lot of businesses are struggling to, to pay their sales tax, or even worse, they don't have any sales to, to pay a tax on. So, so we've seen a deficit in business over the last month. And I think what we're going to see going forward, once we approve this Panthers development, is an abundance of business that will be shared throughout, especially the Rock Hill area, but really throughout York County. Everybody, everybody's going to benefit from it. I was elected to, you know, look out for the people, the taxpayers, the property owners, the business owners, every, everybody. And, and like I said before, I really, I take that very seriously. And when, when we look at the negotiations and we look at what Rock Hill chose, the percentage that Rock Hill chose to give, the percentage that the school district chose to give, and the, the fact that all of those people are also elected, and they represent the same, the same, they represent the citizens of York County. And that's a priority for everyone. So, so we have to trust, and the people have to trust, that we're going to do what's in their best interest. And, you know, we're not always going to get things a hundred percent right, just like tonight, you know, some of us are going to vote yes, and some of us are going to vote no. And we've got reasons for that. But overall, you know, we all, we're here for the taxpayers. And, you know, we, we are, we're looking out for them, we're looking out for the people of York County. And I think we all want to bring economic development and, and good economic development, things that we can all benefit from going forward. I'm going to commend our, our, our county management, Kevin Madden, David Husker, David, David Swinson has, has worked on this. And negotiations are, are difficult. Negotiations, though, are a give and take. And, and if only one side wins, that negotiation is a failure. It's, it's a win-win that we're looking for. And for a win-win to happen, some have to give, and some have to take on each side. And, and I think, I think we've reached that point. And that's why I became a yes, because, you know, it's, it's just, the city of Rock Hill, they want to be a big city. And we're going to help them get there with this vote. Now, the people who live out on the fringe of that, you know, and, and that's all of us, quite frankly, we're all out on the fringe of the city of Rock Hill. But as, as they grow, we're all going to grow. And we have to prepare for that. We have to be open to new ideas. We have to be open to meeting on Zoom. Because you know what? I, I agree with whoever said a little bit ago, maybe in a few years, we'll look back on this, and our kids would probably, you know, laugh, first of all, and say, yeah, yeah, I remember when you tried that Zoom that first time, because they're so much more technically savvy than we are. But I just, I feel like, you know, there's a time and there's a place for everything. I believe this is a win-win-win. The county, the city, the schools, they win. Panthers win. The city, the, the citizens of York County win. I believe the time is right, and I believe Rock Hill, South Carolina, is the right place. And that's all. I'm going to support it a hundred percent.
Mr. Winkler?
All right, thank you. I joke and say, I went to school in northeast Georgia mountains in public school, and I can count. So I know what the vote is tonight. But in seriousness, I am going to speak a little bit about why I will not be supporting this. For one thing, you know, everybody talks about how they were not for it or whatever, and then they became for it. I was, I, I work with numbers every day in my career. I understand the bonds, the, the different numbers. I've looked at the finances. This is the, this is the, the biggest deal York County's ever looked at. That's why I supported it in the first reading, that's why I supported the second reading. But I raised questions and concerns about additional properties in the second reading. My problem is not with the deal, the incentives that were given, they qualify for that on, based on the amount of money they're talking about investing. It's more than just a practice facility. There's a lot of employers, a lot of stuff going on in that original two-hundred-and-some-odd acres. My problem is, I, I've heard Chairman Johnson say it several times, our job is not to pick winners and losers. With this additional pre-approved expansion properties, we're picking winners. We're picking a winner. We're picking the development corporation of the, the Tepper Organization as a winner. As I stated earlier, if somebody's looking to do a hundred-million-dollar investment somewhere in the county, and one of the things I ran on as District Three council member, is yes, we represent the entire county, but I ran on trying to get more investments, more employers into the western part of the district, the rural district that I represent, for tax base for our entities over here, our school district. And this puts that at a disadvantage. If somebody's looking to invest a hundred million dollars in York County, and they look at East Shore Industrial Park, and they qualify for six percent fee in lieu of agreement, they also look at Fort Mill, unincorporated area, they qualify for a six percent agreement. If they look at the two-hundred-and-seventy acres or two-hundred-and-thirty acres, thirty-odd acres, that was in the original agreement, they get four percent. When I first saw this, my one concern that I raised about that was, I said, that puts the rest of the county at a disadvantage. Until that two-hundred-and-something acres is developed, it will be very, very rare for anybody to develop anywhere else in the county. And the answer I got was, well, it's only two-hundred-and-some-odd acres, and with the plans they have, that'll fill up in just a few years. And the answer I got was, well, it's only two hundred and some odd acres, and with the plans they have, that'll fill up in just a few years, and then it'll spread out to the rest of the county again. Now, we're saying, no, there's an additional pre-approved eight hundred and something acres that could be purchased. You're right, they don't own it right now. But it could be purchased in the future and given the same tax benefit, the same agreement that we have now with the two hundred, original two hundred and some odd acres. So that gives them an advantage now that that same person can say, okay, I'm looking, uh, let's say they 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 aren't even doing that. They're looking to buy a property that's beside this two hundred and seventy acres. If they buy it in their name as a manufacturer and invest a hundred million dollars, they're going to pay six percent. If the Tepper organization, development organization comes in and buys that same property, they'll pay four percent with the incentives. So they can tell that business person, well, first of all, they they can tell them, you know, develop it here and I can do it, but Tepper, people have said, well, the other organization can buy it. They can, but Tepper has a built-in advantage with this because of the fact that he's going to pay a lower percentage property tax and the incentives that we've agreed to on the original two hundred and some odd acres, he can afford to pay more than any other developer for that same parcel. Because if they buy it, they're only going to get a six percent if they're lucky with their investment amount. But if Tepper buys it, he can get four percent and then develop it for them. So we've picked Tepper as the winner for York County for the next thirty years. I will not support this motion as it is now. I hate it because I think the staff did a wonderful job putting this together, protecting the county, and looking at what was done. And I supported it from day one based on the potential it had on that original property and that original acreage, but I will not support it with the expansion of the additional properties.
Ms. Cox.
Um, this is the biggest property tax giveaway in the history of the county, in the history of the state of South Carolina. And we did it during a pandemic and didn't allow people the opportunity to come in, to understand it, to ask their questions. We basically said, we don't care what you think. We think this is good for you. And that is wrong. That is exactly why the people in the community don't trust their government. That's exactly why people don't get involved. And I hope that all of the promises that have been made in the media about all of this investment, two billion dollars, I've heard, one billion dollars, the agreement itself doesn't guarantee any investment. At most, it's five hundred million to get the incentives. But I hope you guys are right. And I hope that what's been promised actually happens. I care about this community. I am very concerned about how how this deal was done. I'm very concerned about how the politics started this off. This is, this is a massive amount of money. We have never approved a deal that's four percent property tax rate for forty years for anyone. Not aware of anyone in the state who's done that. Village rates fixed for forty years. No tax increases, not subject to any bond referendum, even though that we know the school has at least expressed some concern and needs. And and I think it's wrong to to say that this is uh simply money that they had. Surely they have to pay taxes at that four percent tax rate. Out of that money is where this two hundred and twenty-five million dollars worth of investment comes from. They have to pay taxes. They're paying a whole lot less than everybody else in these businesses, but it's disingenuous to suggest that somehow it's it it's not tax money that's being diverted for this infrastructure. Um, and that two hundred and twenty-five million is actually, from what I'm told, going to be three hundred and sixty to four hundred and forty million dollars. That combined with a hundred and fifteen million dollars that the state has given, the four forty million in the interchange, the fifty-three million dollars worth of uh cost, actually, it, the analysis for the economic development uh period, period shows that it's supposed to be, um, it's going to be seven hundred, six hundred and ninety-two students that are going to be added to the school district. And that's uh fifty-three million dollars um that's going to have to be paid for by someone. That's six hundred and forty-eight million dollars, just that alone. And the only amount of investment that's really required is five hundred million. And to boot, the city of Rock Hill is giving away a hundred percent of their property tax to do that. So for the next thirty years, twenty-five to thirty years, how are they going to pay for all of the the support that's needed? All of the public uh, public services that are needed for that area? Okay, it's going to come some way. It's going to come from somewhere that where, whether it's utility rates, whether it's um, I I don't know. It's going to come from somewhere. And I guarantee you that we'll probably see some more stuff happening with with other things that have been requested, but um, I also think it's disingenuous to suggest that uh the property was only bringing in seven hundred dollars a year. Well, that's because they got an ag exemption. It's vacant land. And um, you don't need services in the community if there's nothing there. And we all know that there was something planned there, and my understanding was that it would have struck um at seven hundred and fifty million dollars is what it takes for it to 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 break even with the school district. Now, I say all of this only because I think it's wrong to overinflate. I think it's wrong to misrepresent. Um, but I am, you know, obviously outvoted on this. I think the biggest concern that I had had, and I would have, uh, I would, I was, Kevin had convinced me that we needed to look at this two hundred and thirty acre parcel. But when there's an additional grab at the last minute, and we don't give people a chance to be heard, um, um, you're not going to get me in. And I hope that um, listening to the people who came out and spoke, which were overwhelmingly uh uh not even a no, but please just wait and let me, let me have some time. Let me have a real public hearing. That's very disheartening to me. It, I mean, it's very disheartening to me that um, that we could not give them a, just a little bit of time, just a little bit of time to get there. So um, like I said, I I do hope that, uh, Mr. Hart said I wish that we could have gotten a presentation from them for the for the county folks. I know that they've done it for the city, but I do hope that um, I think he said, um, five hundred to seven hundred and fifty million. Um, I think the numbers that have been proposed have been a billion, but um, I really do. I hope that this turns out right, and I hope that it's, that it's um a good thing and and um for the for the sake of the people in the community.
Dr. Blackwell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I I realize all the emotions involved here. Uh, I just want to run through some notes that I made, and forgive me if I've kind of drawn this out a little bit because a lot of the things I'm going to say are have already prob- probably been said. I would ask um Mr. Huspeth or uh Mr. Madden if I say anything that's not true, but please jump right in and correct me. Uh, I want the citizens to understand that this has been going on for almost a year. In fact, I've always said this should have been finished with in October. So here again, it, for all the various reasons, it it got drawn out um the past few months, it was because council members expressed concerns and and they wanted their concerns addressed, and the Panthers would go back and give a little more and try to provide that assurance and the the request that was made. Um, and to their benefit, they've been very accommodating. You know, I I I don't like how the added acreage has come about. Originally, they were talking about maybe a five-mile radius in case they're successful. And it, and it's kind of ironic. Initially, there was a lot of concern about, wait a minute, now are they really going to be successful? They're not really going to guarantee anything more than four hundred, five hundred million dollars. Uh, they've come back and essentially in writing said that they should be at least at a billion dollars. And with the proper growth, they can be maybe two to two and a half billion dollars. Uh, you know, with that comes job. As a, as a Reagan conservative, I've always looked hard for opportunities for people to make a living. I didn't come up easy. I had to earn every little penny I got. And as a small business owner, I'm really sensitive to the tax burden. Um, but when you, when you go through this, and one thing I wanted um to be done was Mr. Madden, who was our finance director, he used to be the auditor that would go to counties, cities, school districts, and point out how they were misusing taxpayer funds. So he essentially became the lead negotiator on this. And over the past weeks, and as of the last version, he assured me that this is as good a deal that the taxpayers could get, especially considering what the city and the school board had already given, agreed to. And um, I trust his judgment a hundred percent. I've never seen a man that's more thorough with taxpayer dollars. I mean, he's worked out things for the capital improvement projects where we're going to save nine or ten million dollars for the taxpayers. Um, but here again, getting back on that additional land, I'm I'm bothered by that because I agree with the owners in that area. That, well, hey, shouldn't somebody have been here talking to us more? And they're right. It probably should have been the case. But it's not that they're thrown into the um package. It's the Panthers are looking at expansion areas, and these are areas that they said they would like to maybe consider if they're extremely successful. And then it's up to the property owner to say yay or nay. Uh, per our attorney and staff, eminent domain cannot be used on that property owner. They have to be willing to do it. And a large part of that area is still an industrial area. Some part of Sturgis Road is not. It's residential. And certainly, I want those people to be treated with the extreme fairness. And with them owning the land, they have the ability to kind of control the discussion. But um, that aside, I just want to kind of go over a few items that may have been uh mentioned already, but I just want to make sure the public understands these points. Um, and I'm kind of looking at a lot of, if you've seen my handwriting, you you realize I'm a doctor because I'm going to have to decipher some of these quick notes. But um, the Panther ownership, you know, per the request of individual council members, certainly agreed to no warehouse distribution center, which upon the last discussion was what was going to happen to that land. Which is great. It's jobs, but it's more in the minimum wage area, and it's a bigger burden on the road system. Um, this opportunity is a much better opportunity without any argument. The uh two hundred and twenty-five million dollar infrastructure, road work and infrastructure um is to be paid in the, you know, per the tax benefits. And it's probably the first time in a super pillow that the owner, the developer, has agreed to roll the tax benefit back into the cost of the infrastructure. And the only other work outside of the boundaries would be based on the county's own TIA, which is traffic impact analysis, which would require road adjustments if needed. Um, the Panthers have agreed to no mixed-use developments with apartments on the additional eight hundred acres if they are successful and they they expand. Uh, that was something they agreed to last week. Uh, the Panthers are going to handle the construction on Mount Gallant Road. That was part of the Pennies project. But now with them agreeing to pay for it, it's saving the taxpayers about three million dollars on top of that instead of three lanes. They get five lanes, and the the turnaround time is going to be a lot faster now. The dirt should be turning in two years, spring of twenty twenty-two. And essentially, that's going to save the taxpayers three million dollars on the Pennies project for the additional work being done. Um, you know, we we get a developer here agreeing to essentially a one billion dollar project. And I can guarantee you, any other county in the state or in the southeast would love this opportunity for maybe one tenth of this proposal. And with this, hopefully, which is the main motivation for me, is we're going to get a lot of uh white-collar corporate jobs with the salaries that that come with that. Um, you know, just to wrap it up, this brings a lot of needed investment at a time, which reminds me of when I first got on council in twenty eleven when we were coming out of recession, and developers could not even afford to build a spec building. So we got into that as a county to trigger that uh growth, and it worked out pretty well. Um, but I can see with this pandemic, that with the virus, we're maybe going to be in that shape. And I can see a lot of counties being in that position. So we have now a developer offering of over a billion-dollar investment, and hopefully a lot more with success, when uh probably a lot of counties are going to be struggling. So per the staff and per Mr. Madden, the taxpayers protected. Tourism and growth are going to be coming here in a positive way. And an added bonus, which was not even my focus, is a football complex, corporate offices and practice facility that'll be state-of-the-art, better than any other facility in the world. So this is a great opportunity. We, my last year as chairman, we um purchased that nineteen hundred acres. It's already been mentioned. So we're, you know, we're certainly want to have that quality of life, but we also want to have the jobs so people can support themselves. So over the next eight, thirteen years, I'm sure this is going to be a great opportunity uh for York County. And just speaking of a couple of numbers, we get six, seven hundred dollars a year on that property right now. With the first CO, which will probably be twenty twenty-five, it's projected that our first year we'll get about six hundred K. So, I mean, we're not giving away taxpayers' money. We're creating a foundation for tremendous growth and a benefit for the taxpayers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I will end this discussion. Mr. Winkler somewhat stole my favorite line of government should not pick winners and losers. What we should do is set a a table in which all businesses can come and all can succeed. When Kingsley was built in Fort Mill, Kingsley did not get funds from the county to pour back into infrastructure. They paid for their own infrastructure. They put in their own water. They put in their own sewer. They put in their own roads. Kingsley was a success. What we've said, though, is that we're going to pay for all of the infrastructure for the Panthers at two hundred and twenty-five million, or a good chunk of the infrastructure at two hundred and twenty-five million. And then we're going to give them tax incentives. And I thought Mr. Winkler hit that on the nail, too. It is going to put a permanent, this is now your champion. This is the group that will be able to win deals. This is the group that can put together better packages than anywhere else in the county to the detriment of the rest of the county. And I don't think that needs to be overlooked. Despite all that, my original objection was I didn't like the X X par- parcels, and I didn't like the money going to the bridge. We fixed the bridge part, but we didn't fix the parcels. No one should have any doubt. Having the Carolina Panthers in York County is a good thing. What they do on that two hundred and thirty acres is a positive thing. Great things are going to happen there, and I look forward to them being there. I just don't believe this was done the right way. I've heard a lot of tonight, well, people need to trust us. We know what's best. Well, I have found that government doesn't know what's best. Uh, what Ronald Reagan said, you know, the seven scariest words are, I'm from the government and I'm here to help. Well, I'm here from the government and I know what's best is is what I, what I feel we've had tonight. Um, we didn't allow, we had a caller tonight who took four times to figure out how to get on. Four different times he had to get on before he could tell us he didn't want this project. We could have had a public hearing at another date, and maybe we would have had a better vote than we're going to have. I think the people who had these other parcels, they deserved a day that we're not going to give them. And giving them a meeting in June or July and making them feel better about it doesn't change the fact that they, that they weren't given their day-to-day. Um, I will now call the motion. Ms. Love, unmute yourself, Allison. Thank you.
Yay.
Yay.
Mr. Winkler.
No.
Mr. Roddy.
Yea.
Ms. Cox.
No.
Dr. Blackwell.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
I vote no. Motion passes four to three. On to the next one. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider amending and providing third reading of an ordinance authorizing and proving the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial business park in conjunction with Chester County. Such industrial business park be geographically located in York County and established pursuant to section 4-1-170 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina. As amended, provide for a written agreement with Chester County to provide for the expenses of the park, the percentage of revenue application and the distribution of fees in lieu of ad valorem taxation to provide for the execution and delivery of an interlocal agreement with the city of Rock Hill and other matters related there too. Trish, I believe you've sent me a thing that says we need to have lower everyone's hands now, but is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? No, excuse me, against. Is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Trish, anybody?
No, sir, not this time. There, there are no hands. You might want to remind them that hit star.
I will remind you, if you are wanting to speak, you have to hit star nine and to, to raise your hand so that we can hear you. And the toll free number is 877-853-5257. The ID is 530426388. And it is star nine. Is there anyone against?
We have a, someone, Mr. Chairman, give the phone number with the last three digits, 509, please take their name and address.
I'm Steve. I'm against this. Okay.
Hello?
Yes, yes, sir. I need your name and, and address, please.
Uh, my name is Steve Line again. I live at 731 University Drive.
Yes, sir. Feel free to give us your opinion.
Uh, I am very against this. They, if there is something that can help Eaton Terrace and the potholes and all the crap that's, um, you know, I blew out two tires with, on that road. I also don't. What's that? Yep. It is very bad on Eaton Terrace. University Drive is beautiful, but driving down Eaton Terrace stinks. And I'm using very easily French. It's going to make, it's going to make traffic very, very bad, especially with the apartment complex that is right now being developed on Anderson and Eaton Terrace. Granted, with the virus that's going on right now, it's, it's, it's very, it's very easy to get to work. And yes, I work in Charlotte. But I also don't think that the owner of the Panthers should take over a local golf course that I play. And I play very frequently and support my dollars to local money. And I like, I like the golf course. I don't want it to be private. It should be open up to the public.
How about Miami and Orange?
But also I'm originally from Buffalo. And I saw what was happening when they wanted to move the stadium. That is a stadium that was from 1973 that is still viable. And the owner has done very good things for that city. If the stadium stays up in Charlotte and the practice facility moves down here, that is a nice thing. But I, I, I am very concerned about how traffic and how things. My street, my street is very busy with, uh, fire trucks and ambulances and police and people that do more than the speed limit. So now I am, I am so close to that facility that it, it makes sense. Can you help me answer some of that stuff?
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Trish, is there anyone else who would like to speak against at this point?
Yes, sir. We have Mr. Walton.
Before we begin, Mr. Walton, I am now at 4% power. Christie, you have to take it. May have to take over the rest of this. I gotta walk out and get some, get a cord and try to plug back in. Go ahead, Mr. Walton. Thank you.
Hey, I apologize. I, I, I think I chimed in too fast and you asking for folks that are against it, but let me just say this real briefly and I get out you guys. Wait, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Listen, I want to commend you all on what you do. I live at 401 Irvinus Place in the Water for Glenn subdivision. And I'm an ex-military man. I spent 20 years in the military and I think you guys are doing a super job. I've been all over the world and, uh, uh, I'm, I'm very proud to come back to Rock Hill and see the progress that's taking place. And I know I'm out of order for, uh, you know, speaking for, but I just want to commend you guys for what you do. I live right in the center of the golf course and I can speak for, uh, every homeowner out here pretty much. I serve on the board of, uh, a homeowner, a board of directors for a homeowner. And I know folks that have had their houses on the market, but after a lot of transactions start taking place, uh, they've gone and taken their house off the market, waiting to see what's going to transpire with the golf course. I play golf, but again, I do apologize for chiming in wrong, at the wrong time. But I want to commend all of you guys for what you do. So thank you for what you do and I pray, uh, that everything work out well for all of us.
At this time, we don't have any more hands.
No one in favor? Making sure.
No hands at this time, ma'am.
All right. Oh, thank you. We're ready for the vote, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Is there a motion to close public hearing?
Miss Close.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Ms. Love, on the motion to close public hearing.
Yes.
Mr. Winkler.
Yes.
Mr. Roddy.
Yes.
Ms. Cox. Mr. Blackwell. Dr. Blackwell.
Oh, hang on. I'm muted.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Just to close.
I vote to close as well. Is there a motion on the main issue?
We do approve.
Second. Chairman Johnson.
Any discussion? And it begins unless there, well, there, I think there's about to be an amendment. Go ahead, Mr. Winkler.
Yes, uh, just on principle, I, I know what's going to happen, but I said I was going to do it and I stand against it. I make a motion to remove exhibit B from the Rock County Industrial Park.
Second.
Mr. Winkler, you are allowed to speak first.
For the same purposes, I'm not going to rehash everything. Um, everybody's heard my points. I've heard their points. I've counted the votes. We know what's going to happen, but on principle, I do not support this, um, with that additional exhibit in there, and that's the reason I made the motion.
Ms. Cox.
For the same reasons that, um, that I, that I echoed, uh, Mr. Winkler's response and, um, believe that the, that the people deserve a, a real public hearing.
Ms. Love.
No comment.
Mr. Roddy.
No comment.
Dr. Blackwell.
I'm good.
Mr. Hamilton.
I have nothing.
I will call the motion beginning with Ms. Love on the amendment. Yea or nay, Ms. Love?
Nay.
Mr. Winkler.
Yes.
Mr. Roddy.
Nay.
Ms. Cox.
Yes.
Dr. Blackwell.
No to the amendment.
Mr. Hamilton.
No, also to the amendment.
I vote yes to the amendment. The amendment fails. We are back to the main motion. Mr. Hamilton.
Um, I don't have any further discussion other than, you know, for the sake of anyone listening, this is a necessary step to create the multi-county industrial park so that the previous issue that we just debated at length, um, can go forward.
Mr. Roddy.
I have nothing.
Ms. Love.
No comment.
Mr. Winkler.
No comment.
Ms. Cox.
No comment.
Dr. Blackwell.
Uh, just to follow up, uh, Mr. Hamilton, this is essentially a state law for a multi-county industrial district. So this is just essentially procedural.
Then I, and I, and I will go last. This is purely a procedural vote at this point to create the, the park. Now for the actual vote, Ms. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Winkler.
No.
Mr. Roddy.
Yes.
Ms. Cox.
No.
Dr. Blackwell.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
I will vote no. Motion passes four to three. Under new business, counsel to ratify the purchase of 40 laptops from Dell Marketing Inc. for a total amount of $38,977.95 under the provisions of emergency procurement.
Move for approve.
Second.
Any discussion? We will vote on this. Ms. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Winkler.
Yes.
Mr. Roddy.
Yes.
Ms. Cox.
Yes.
Dr. Blackwell.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion passes. Counsel to consider first reading by title only of an ordinance to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2020. To provide for the levy of taxes for York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2020. To provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds and providing, provide for other fiscal matters relating to county government. Need a motion?
Move for approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Dr. Blackwell.
Um, per, uh, Mr. Winkler's comment, comments and email earlier today or this week, um, I, I'm a little concerned about the fact that, I understand it's procedural and we've still got two more readings. I hate that we're kind of doing it this way, but the Panther situation, I guess, has had taken up so much time of the staff, especially our finance director. I understand the need, but, uh, I guess this is a once in a lifetime way that we're doing this, but I hate we're having to do it this way.
Any other discussion? I will just add this on to, uh, the discussion. I realize that, that COVID is, is making us be farther apart. We're trying to do this by Zoom meeting. We need to, whether we hold the workshops online, we need to make every attempt to make the budget process as transparent as humanly possible so that no one questions how we are budgeting and spending money, especially during these types of times. So all those in favor, Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Winkler.
Yes.
Mr. Roddy.
Yes.
Ms. Cox.
Yes.
Dr. Blackwell.
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion passes. Committee and other reports, there were none. Council member new non-agenda comments. I'm going to actually lead off. I, I have three. I realize it's getting late, so I will be brief. I would like the county council to consider waiving hospitality tax collections from March 1 till the end of May. If any industry has been hit the hardest from this epidemic, it is the hospitality. It is our restaurants. We literally might see restaurants go under in an attempt to pay a hospitality tax to the county. We can do without March, April and May's, uh, collections. Uh, will it be tough? Yes, but we can, we can make something happen. I, I think that is something this council needs to seriously consider and I hope we are willing to do that at our next meeting. I also want to bring up, this is a reassessment year. I, just as in 2010, that the council did not move forward with reassessment. I think this council, I think long and hard before we reassess properties and potentially change and increase property taxes in, during this time. We're going to see, it's going to be hard enough for businesses to stay open and, and people who are, who are struggling without us reassessing, uh, doing a reassessment of the tax code. Uh, lastly, it has come to my attention that it is almost impossible for certain developers to do a TIA at this point, a traffic impact analysis. They're not able to do these on large commercial developments. One, because schools aren't in session, so they can't get the traffic counts. And if you don't have one that's been recently done on that road, you just don't have a traffic count. We need to do everything in our power to make sure that development, commercial development continues in York County. We need to help those. We need to find a way, and I'm going to ask Mr. Hudson and, and the, and the planning department to come up with a plan to make sure that businesses can continue to build. The last thing we need is a, is a side effect of this slowdown in the economy is that we just stop economic development and, and this type of development in York County. There's, there's one in my district specifically. I'm sure there will be many others. We need to make sure that we're staying on that. And I would ask that we have a plan and that staff report back to us how they intend to handle this TIA issue, uh, within the next few weeks. Anyone else have a new non-agenda comment?
Chairman Johnson, I'd like to speak.
Yes, sir, Mr. Winkler.
I know this is not the point to debate comments or whatever, but, um, I would like staff to know that I support what you said tonight. Other than I do question the age tax one because that is not an out of pocket expense for those restaurants. That is a tax that they collect from the people spending the money there and it's a pass through. So I do question that one, but I support everything else you said. If staff needs a second on all the rest of it.
Thank you, sir. Any other new, any other items that they'd like to bring up? Yes, sir, Mr. Roddy.
Uh, I just, I just want to continue to encourage everybody to, um, social distance, uh, practice safe measures, do all you can to protect your families. If you're still having to, to go to work like I am, um, you know, you can carry those same methods to the workplace, those same work methods that you have at, at work, you can bring those back home with you as well. I've been trying to keep up with this COVID-19 across, across the state of South Carolina. You know, we get a lot of national news and news out of North Carolina, but here within the last week or so, I think the Rock Hill and York County area has really tightened down on some of the unnecessary gatherings, unnecessary trips, and we're starting to see, um, some real positive results. And, and hopefully we can continue to practice these, um, these methods at home and at work, um, and, and continue to flatten this curve and like the wishes of our governor, pretty soon be able to get back to, to open up the economy. One thing I'll caution everybody with though, with the, the, the recent announcement of things kind of slowing down and new cases, uh, being held to, to somewhat a reasonable or minimum, uh, we can't let a guard down. We have to continue to do these, uh, safe practices, um, for the next couple of weeks or so, so that we can, can really get to that, that comfort level. Uh, because once, uh, once we kind of open things back up, there's no, there's no, uh, turning back at that point, but, uh, But, uh, I just want to commend all the families and people who are, who are practicing, um, safe methods. And my condolences go out to all the families across the state, across the country who, who've lost loved ones and continue to, uh, endure the, uh, the battle with the, uh, with the sickness. Uh, that's one thing that, that when we see these numbers popping up on the screen, uh, some people say, oh, it was only this number. But let's remember the, there are, are families that's associated with each and every number that, that, that goes up on the screen. So just wanting to kind of bring some recognition to those families that have gone through it and those families that will continue to go through it. And hopefully, um, things will, will come out on, on the positive side. But man, the last week or so, we, we've been really doing a, 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 a good job around the state of South Carolina with, with keeping our numbers well below what's kind of our projectile, uh, was on track to meet. So good job, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Roddy. Anyone else before we go? I'm going to say one last thing and I want to say it before we come out of executive session. I want to say thank you to Trish Startup, our PIO for the county and our IT staff. I have to be honest, you, for those watching at home, there are, they have gone to certain council members, uh, offices to assist when needed. This, they've gone above and beyond to make this happen. This, this wasn't something they put together today. This has been worked on for weeks and I, I appreciate everyone for all of their hard work and thank you. Do we have a motion for executive session?
Mr. Chairman, first, I, I do need to echo one thing on that. Apparently, um, I needed two people here with me all night long and they're still here with me. Um, so, so I, I do appreciate that. I haven't had a hiccup yet.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to add, you know, to everyone who called in today to participate in the meeting and for everyone who's watching or viewing without participating, um, you know, they did not have the luxury that, that we had of having on, on-call IT services to help us overcome any learning curve with utilizing the new technology. Um, these times unfortunately call for everyone to be adaptable and, and kind of overcome new challenges. And I, and I really am sincerely grateful for everyone who participated tonight and voiced their concerns and called in.
All right. Hear, hear from everyone on that. Mr. Winkler, how about an executive session motion? I want to remind council, we will go into executive session. You will leave, you, you will stay on this screen, but you will mute it and then we will go, you'll go somewhere else and get on a phone call for executive session.
Yes, sir. I move we go into executive session for receipt of legal advice on settlement of condemnation project one, 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 four, nine, dash, zero, zero, four, tract eighty-nine and request for additional authority for tract seventy-two. Contractual matter of good motor company property and for receipt of legal advice on blue granted rape case and franchise territory matters.
Second.
There's a first and a second. Ms. Love? Yes. Mr. Winkler?
Yes.
Mr. Roddy?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Blackwell?
Can I have one moment to think about this? No, what the heck?
You were about to be ruled out of order, Dr. Blackwell. Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
I vote yes. We are in executive session. Counsel has exited executive session. Are there any motions to be made?
Yes, sir. Move to approve mediated settlement agreement presented in executive session regarding county condemnation project US twenty-one, South Carolina fifty-one, tract eighty-nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Love, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Winkler?
Yes.
Mr. Roddy?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Blackwell?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion passes. Are there any other motions?
Yes, sir. Uh, move to grant engineering the additional settlement authority as discussed in executive session regarding county condemnation project US twenty-one, South Carolina fifty-one, tract seventy-two.
Again, second.
There's a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Ms. Love, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Winkler?
Yes.
Mr. Roddy?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Blackwell?
Yes.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion passes. There are any other motions coming out of executive session?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second for the sake of discussion? No.
Thank discussion? Is there any discussion? And we're going to do this the old fashioned way. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.